I'm going to call this meeting of Gloucester School Committee to order. And I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successfully engaged lifelong learners. And I'll ask you to join me in this meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oral communications, if there's anybody here who would like to address the school committee on any subject not on the agenda, this is their opportunity. All about three minutes. Can you briefly state your name and address?
Hi, Mary Ann Alpichay, 93-Mon Plus Avenue. This is a piece of a wall that came out of the East Gloucester Elementary School retaining wall approximately four to five years ago. I called and I asked, and I asked, and I asked to have it repaired. This has gone from this to 30 feet. Since you put up the stream photos on Facebook for everybody's review, I am asking, and I've asked a school committee member in the past, and I'm going to ask for remediation report on that stream. I have two grandchildren in that school, and if those children are going to be in that school for the next two years till this project is complete, I want to make sure that all of those children are safe from that school.
As do we.
As do we.
So, the quicker we have the remediation on that report, the better it will be. This is just one of the many, many, many things that has gone on at that school that I have reported. I reported a gas leak that took nine years to be taken care of. I reported it to you, and you came back. I know that you said that National Grid said there was nothing wrong. There was a huge problem there that we finally had taken care of. But I am really tired of watching my school or the schools in my city, the schools in my city, being not maintained. And I feel like this is another fuller. This is another fuller with East Gloucester. This is another fuller happening. And it's a shame. It's a shame that it's gotten to this point that we have to do this. I'm also a realist, and I understand something has to be done. But to have to sit and watch year after year after year of nothing being maintained, it disappoints me to the highest degree.
Good job, ladies and gentlemen. Do you have anything?
Yes. I have just something. In all school communication, we went to the East Gloucester community from the East Gloucester Principal Catherine at 17 High Rock. The principal beckoned parents to a PTO meeting to hear an update on the new consolidated school project and the Vote Yes campaign from the Executive Director of GEF. I wanted to know who cleared that all-call message. I wanted to know if GEF is lobbying for that at this point. I wanted to commend another elementary school principal who passed off on that because if there was going to be a presentation from one position, it should be from all of the positions. I think it's time, it's a 10-year mark to review the relationship of GEF and GPS and establish some firewalls, some best practice for successful foundation and school partnerships, or things like a school committee member can't be a board member on the foundation and vice versa, also not a big donor. Clearly, that's a conflict of interest. Also, ditto going into the school and lobbying. So, back to the proposed school lobbying and the PTO. What is going to be the lobbying going forward related to the school committee and GEF? And Brad Dorr mentioned at one of the building committee meetings that usually it's the building committee that comes up with the verbiage that's going to go on the ballot initiatives. I want all of those questions answered. Thank you.
Do you have that written, please? Do you have a written request? I mean, I didn't write, I didn't write down all of your questions.
Well, some of them I've asked you before. For instance, I've asked for a list of all the school expenditures and the studies and phases since 2012, not just related to what's going forward.
Did you do an official public records request?
Yes. Well, no, I didn't do a FOIA. I've asked you guys, though, and you're involved in it. You have a school administration that you work with. You have the biggest budget in the most supportive city ever, a fantastic DPW, fantastic mayor, fantastic town. So, you guys have a big budget, big support team.
I'm just asking, because I know that's usually the policy on the city, and I think the mayor can back it up on that.
John Don immediately gave, you know, John Don and Ken Coster are fantastic. If you say what are the D's Doran Whittier Expenditures service, they'll give you a list right away. Anything that is in the city department is fast. But it doesn't cover things like Doran Whittier's subcontractors. For instance, CBRE, which is the project manager on this project, getting $300,000, and a Fortune 500 company at that. So, I think you guys can figure that out between your committee, and I think we can figure out what is the, what is the, is there a legal constraint for lobbying by a school committee for a vote? I don't know. Does anybody know that?
I don't understand any questions. So, you're asking, can the school committee, sorry.
Can the school committee lobby for public policy?
For school policy? School policies are public policy, and they can certainly lobby for school policy. But what they can't do is lobby for a political.
So, who okayed the principal sending out an all-call message about the new building project and the Vote Yes?
I don't know, but we'll find out.
Okay, so I want an answer related to that. It's pretty clear. I also want to know why it said the executive director.
Catherine, do you have a list, excuse me, do you have a list of all the questions?
Yeah, yeah, no, I'll send it.
Email me all your questions.
I wanted why you're all here, because I think that this is going to go down.
Read them, but then send us an email so we have them.
Yes. You sent us all an email so we can see your questions?
One, let's, yeah, just, just, and we'll do our best to answer them.
Yeah, and then I really want to address the formal partnership of GEF and the foundation going forward, and we have many, many great town examples with successful foundations. And I'm telling you, there's a firewall between the foundation and the schools. Board members aren't on both.
Yesterday, I stood at Eastern Ave. I counted cars, because everyone seems to wonder how many cars are there. So, I stood there, and I think I did a pretty good job. There was 709 cars coming down Eastern Ave. I did 2:30 to 3:30. It was just an hour that I stood there. So, from 2:30 to 3:30, there was 709 cars that went down Eastern Ave. 135 came down Webster Street, and 74 came from Eastern Ave up to Webster Street. I witnessed parents parked on Eastern Ave, taking their kids out and almost getting hit. I witnessed many people almost getting hit on the crosswalk right there. I witnessed just, just a lot of really bad, all kinds of violations, people not, you know, doing what this was doing, riding very fast with their cell phones, you know, we just went in the cell phone law. And I think that something needs to be done. I know for a fact that the parents parked for West Parish on 133. When I passed out 50 letters to get people to come to our listening post, I almost got hit there several times going in the whole around West Gloucester area. I can't imagine parents getting out of their car on 133 with strollers, because my friends have seen it, the roses, they live right there, they see it. I can't imagine that's happening every day, and we still haven't done anything about it. Now, and I said that, too, about what's going to happen at Webster. Yes, I love children. This is why I'm here. You know, come on, we have to do something better. We know that something's going on at West Parish. We know this. We know that this is happening. Why aren't we stopping it? Really, why aren't, why aren't we doing something about it? Are we going to wait till someone gets killed? Why are we always doing that? How many people can we name right here? Steven Ross, we could go through the whole list of everybody that has gone killed. We have to do something better. Let's think about this. Let's think about it. Please. Thank you. For Joseph.
We have two issues that we need to address publicly. One is we are in need of people to volunteer to be on the search committee for the superintendent search. And so, if you are interested, we have criteria that are on the websites, and if you are interested, send a letter to me. Also, we need bus drivers. Still, we have a crisis of transportation in the city. So, moving on to our student advisory council.
It's been a long time, this, you guys. Well, winter sports season, the regular season has died down, and we're now on to the postseason playoffs. Our boys hockey and boys basketball both won their first playoff game, and they're playing both Friday night. Boys hockey, 8:00 PM in Auburn, and boys basketball, 5:00 PM at Latin Academy, which is like in Boston. And so, that's really exciting. A lot of school spirit going on there. Let's see, what else do I got? This Saturday, there is a mattress fundraiser at GHS to support the music department, so the chorus and band. That's from 10 to 5. Senior sweatshirts are on sale at Gloucester High School. They're all $35 each. We also, of course, selection going on at Gloucester High School is a little crazy. That's what our homeroom time's been spent on. And for seniors, we're all finding out about colleges, and so everyone's talking about that and getting ready to write scholarship essays and letters. Their sophomore spring fling will be occurring soon along with the junior event. The seniors just put together their parent banquet menu and finalized everything yesterday, so that was really exciting. I think it was like the best food choices yet this year. Like, everything else was okay, but like this one I'm excited about. And prom is later this year, and I'm still crossing my fingers about free prom tickets. I think that we may get there, or we'll be down like the $20 mark, which I think will be amazing. Thank you, Joel. And everyone else was helped out buying Gloucester monopoly board. We will have, we have another order placed, and so they will be in hopefully as soon as possible, and I encourage everyone to buy one. They're so, so amazing. I finally got to play not that long ago, so that was really exciting.
I played over vacation.
Yeah, everyone keeps on telling you, oh, I played, oh, I played. I'm like, oh, my gosh. And when the Gloucester really types came and took the photo, we were all so excited to open the box, because none of us had actually looked inside yet, because we're all like, oh, the box is so pretty, and none of us had actually played yet. So, it was very exciting. We're holding a blood drive on March 13th at the high school. All the students donate blood, or as the students who want to volunteer donate blood. Last year, collected, I mean, last year, this fall, we collected 38 pints. So, my goal is to surpass that. We only, because we're a smaller school, they do, like, they only give us so many beds and so many slots, so I like maximize the amount of pints I can get. And NHS inductions are March 26th, so it's like a, it's a nice memory, remembering last year I was in that position, and their essays were due today, so everything got finalized, and seeing everyone's excited reaction for NHS induction night. So, that's all I have for the board.
Any questions?
And how does one get a monopoly board at this point?
At this point?
Besides going on Facebook and complaining that there's not enough?
Yeah, right. Well, hopefully, next, next time I come back and see you guys, I'll bring forms, because they're still on the way. I didn't want to be like, oh, I'll bring a form now, because I don't want to tell you there is a monopoly board here for you when there isn't. But there's, we've already pre-sold 100. We're ordering 500, but for sure, we'll make sure that all of you get one, so it's really exciting.
I have a question. Do you know if there's any student buses organized for Fridays, either Friday game?
Not yet. They haven't posted about it. But I don't know if there'll be a conflict, knowing that they're both, they were hoping that one was going to get rescheduled and pushed, but I don't know. Usually, you're in charge of that, usually, Ms. Rex. Are they going to do it, or no?
I'm not sure. We haven't seen a big draw for that just yet, and there is that conflict with those two days.
With the two games.
Very different directions.
Yeah.
Lloyd Chester for the basketball, and Lloyd for the hockey. So, especially with the lack of practice.
Anya? Thank you very much. I inadvertently skipped over the recognitions. Do we have any recognitions?
Mr. Chair. I'd like to mention senior Liam Donahue became the first wrestler in Gloucester US history to win the sectional tournament and to be named sectional champion. He has also competed in the All States meet, either last weekend or the weekend before. I don't know how he did. I was waiting for some information on that. Last year, he qualified for the All States as well, and ended with a strong performance in the sectionals and finished in sixth place at the All States meet. He's also the first wrestler in GHS history to amass 100 career victories, as well as being a two-time North Eastern Conference First Team All-Conference recipient, and he's a Bay State Games finalist. And on top of all that, he's an honest student at GHS. So, congratulations to Liam, and I'm glad he and I are now in the same weight class.
He, yeah, it says, I just looked it up on the Fishman Athletics site, says, "Great moment in GHS sports history as Liam Donahue is the D3 state champion with a tremendous performance over the two-day tournament." And Quinton Albert, who's a junior, also had a fourth-place finish in states.
I'll follow that up. Caroline McKay in swimming. I think the swim program is now, what, three years old or four years old?
Three, four.
She took seventh place in the 50-meter freestyle, which is phenomenal as a sophomore, too. I don't want to even try. I'm sure there's others.
Anything else? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda anybody would like to remove for further discussion?
Do we approve the consent agenda? Say again.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. The next order of business is to reconsider the timeline for the superintendent search. Dorothy Presser is here to, just before this meeting, we had a brief program subcommittee meeting at which we discussed this, and this is, essentially, we were supposed to finalize this brochure tonight, but with the number of things on the agenda, we felt that it wouldn't be here long enough to do it. So, Dorothy, do you want to just explain the impact of the, of the switch?
Right, so I was basically asked if we could look at a timeline that moved everything forward two weeks. And I really don't see any impact in the, in the pool that you would, do you have a question?
No.
Okay. In the pool that you would have in the search, I think that the candidate pools this year look pretty strong and pretty healthy. So, the impact that, the possible impact that I see, because moving the, starting the advertising two weeks forward, because a vacation sneaks in there, actually moves your decision date three weeks forward, so it moves it to the end of May instead of early May. The impact that I see, then, is the potential that a candidate you select may not have the opportunity to give as much notice as one would like for a July first start date. There are, you know, there are ways around that. Very often, districts that the candidate is coming from will work something out to shorten that, shorten that time period of notice. The candidate might have vacation time and can spend some time here from the other district. Other time, you also have the opportunity of figuring out a way to have an interim superintendent for the short amount of time until that person could actually start. So, I don't see an impact in the search or the final outcome of the search. The only impact that I do see is on that start date potentially for a new person.
So, I want to apologize. I was out of the room before you started, because I was making copies of the timeline that we didn't all have, because we just got it tonight. So, I apologize. So, I don't really know how we led into this discussion, and I apologize.
Just the timeline.
Okay. So, we met tonight as a personnel subcommittee. Most of us were there to discuss the results of the superintendent search survey, the focus groups. We also talked about the brochure, which led to a conversation about the timeline. And what we realized is we have a lot of work to do for the brochure, which triggers the advertising of the position. We have a conversation for the group to have as a whole about the criteria, and you'll hear a little bit more about that after tonight. And we are scheduling another meeting for two weeks to solidify what the brochure will look like, which means we're making decisions on criteria and things like that. So, we got, being said, obviously, we're not doing that tonight because of time and content that needs to be discussed. So, the request is to approve this timeline, putting the search off two weeks. And that's what, a recommendation came out of the personnel subcommittee tonight to recommend to the full committee that we accept this as our new timeline, and I still move that motion.
Is there any discussion?
Any questions?
Any questions, Adora? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Dorothy, I just want to thank you for all the work tonight and working with us as a group to get this process moving forward. Obviously, we have some work to do. We'll get it done by the school committee meeting, I promise. Thank you.
So, we will schedule a, our next school committee meeting will schedule a 6 o'clock start in order to, and the first item on the agenda will be to work and on the brochure, which will then, we'll try to get voted that night, and it will go into the advertised, as you see on the timeline, the Friday after that. And the timeline is here, it's what we just voted, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next order of business is a presentation and update on the elementary school project, and we have Michelle Rogers here, along with Brad Dorr from Doran Willia, as well as Tom Ellis from CBRE here.
So, tonight, what I'm going to be walking you through is some of our floor plans for the session since the last time that we had seen you. And we'll review a typical classroom, so that you can see what those are going to be looking at. We're going to focus a little bit more on the site plan, and then update you on the traffic study updates that we presented to the school building committee last week. So, if you'd like, I'm going to go all the way through, and then we can handle any questions after that. It's a very long presentation, and I want to make sure that we get through all of it. So, for floor plan updates, we've had some minor floor plan, plan adjustments since the last time that you had seen this plan, but then we had some other major ones, and some of those major ones include relocation of the music area and the stage. The stage formerly was in the cafeteria, typical to the West Parish, but then we heard from the community that you really wanted a stage and not a platform. So, in order to do that, we started looking at different ways that we could do that economically and effectively, so that we can have a higher stage with a higher roof. The stage wound up on the second floor and attached to the gymnasium. There it is, there in green. And because of that, we also moved the music room up. We have an adjacency that we want to keep the music with the stage, so that you can have practice for performances, and then move students during a performance from the music to the stage, sort of a green room kind of environment. So, the adjacency of the stage and the music room was important, too. So, both those two elements came up to the second floor. One of our major changes. And then, oh, sorry. And then the other major change was increasing the gymnasium so that we could have some sideline seating. Something else that we heard from the community was that there's no place to sit in some of these elementary school gymnasiums, and it was important to have some sideline seating. In order to do that, we increased the gymnasium footprint itself by 394 square feet, and you see some math that increases that. So, that's the net square footage, and then the 591 is a gross square footage. You multiply it by one and a half times, and that's how you get to the gross. So, we're looking at being more efficient with the building as we go through time, but this is where we start with the additional square footage to allow for seating in the gymnasium. Some other small, minor changes was relocation of some office spaces. And then, all of that, all in all, the last time we met with you, our entire square footage was at 89,000. Our current plan would be increase for the gymnasium space and the addition of what we call the mother's room and the nest, which is a clothing pantry, which exists hardly at the veterans' school. We didn't have that in our previous program, and we wanted to make sure that we capture that square footage, I think. So, all in all, we've increased the square footage total by 966 square feet. That's gross, so we're all the whole building. And again, as we move through from schematic design into our next phase, we'll keep looking at ways to bring that down, but that's where we're starting, that's our starting frame of business. We've had some great conversations today and last, and we will go through tomorrow with the teachers from both veterans', as well as East Gloucester School. And this is a typical classroom. This happens to be a kindergarten classroom. This is the way things are shaping up for most of these classrooms. You have these small group rooms here that you see down here. These are for special education providers to come in and take children between the two classrooms and have this small group environment. So, it's called a push-in model. So, children are no longer leaving, walking all the way down the hallway, having their lessons, and then coming back. It's almost, it is right adjacent to their classroom, so it almost has been a part of their classroom. When special education programmers aren't using these spaces, they can be used as small group collaborative learning spaces. So, if you have three or four children who want to work on a project together from either classroom, they could go in and use this space. You can see the windows in the corners allow the teachers to have supervision of these spaces. There's pocket doors with rattle surface, so that you can connect to both classrooms. And then there's the hallway door, so that teachers and other students can enter that classroom and use that space efficiently. Other pieces is we have a folding marked board wall, so that the two classrooms can open up and have shared curriculum between the two classrooms. That's typical for all classrooms, but also included in this kindergarten classroom. You see a toilet here, and that is unique to kindergarten classrooms only. So, all, all of the kindergarten classrooms have a toilet room right within the classroom, so you're not sending the little ones down the hallway to go to the bathroom by themselves. Moving on to the site plan. So, our site plan, the existing conditions, I'm fairly familiar with the site, but I want to bring some things to your attention, because they're important as we move forward. So, on this site, you have 25 marked parking spaces around the building. You have this little lot over here that's adjacent to the entrance, which has eight parking spaces, including two handicap spaces. And this is how you access the handicap. You cross the driveway there and go up this ramp, make your way to the front entrance of the building. And then you have 10 additional spaces off of Webster Street that are actually part of the property and used during school hours by school and after hours by people in the community and adjacent neighborhood. Those red lines there, if you look before, they were cars parked there. Those are not marked parking spaces. So, what you have here on this site is cars being parked in lots of different locations throughout the day, sort of catch as, catch as you can. Those are actually fire lanes that they're parked in there. So, there's the total. So, a total of 43 parking spaces on this site. So, if you remember that, when we get to talking about the proposed conditions, you'll see the increase of those different spaces. Other pieces here is that you have the front entrance, you have a hardscape play area that looks like this picture down here in the background. You have a playground that looks like this. And then you have the field in the back there, which is also used for physical education classes, because the cafeteria and the gym are the same space, so you're getting the kids out as much as they can. When we start looking at the existing traffic conditions, this is sort of the pattern of traffic. The green dots are crossing guards. The green dots are crossing guards at each of these crosswalks. The red dots indicate people who might be parking off-site down here, or way up here, or in the neighborhoods, and they're walking down and crossing to get to the front door. And the blue dots, those are cars, and you can see how they stack up. A lot of them are parked on one side of the road. And other cars, only a few, will come in and try to turn around here and pull out. The big red boxes, these are the three buses. There's one large bus that actually parks on Webster Street, and when it's parked there on Webster Street, and the cars are parked adjacent to it on the side, other side of the road, there's only one lane for cars to get back on the road. So at that point, it does create a hazard there on that side of the street. So this is some of the existing conditions. You can see the two buses parked on Webster Street there, with the cars parked on the side. And this is the class backing in, this is the parking area. So it goes up on Webster Street, back into the parking, the cars adjacent to the sidewalk, so the kids can load there. Just watch that for one second. You can see the cars parked on the sides of that there, they're parked in the, in the fire lane. They're actually queuing up, getting out of their cars and going up their students out of the door. You can see people trying to sneak out here behind, other people walking up or walking back to where they park off-site. And then the traffic congestion that you see here, coming up the street on Webster Street. These cars will go up into the neighborhood, turn around someplace, and come back down or walk on the side of the road to get their students. So these are all the conditions that we're looking to improve. Again, you'll see the cars here that are queued up, I think there's about six of them here. And then as the buses parked over here on the side, they're actually blocking parents' way. Once the kids are in the car, they can't get off site. So, the existing conditions, um, right now, the, there's 161 cars entering the site during drop-off time. Um, 56 of those cars are coming in around 8:30 in the morning to 8:45 in that 15-minute window. And then another 70 about 8:45 to 9 o'clock. I forgot my number that you mentioned, Patty, but it's pretty close here. In the afternoon, you have 149 being picked up. But you'll see right here, at the, this 15-minute window and this 15-minute window, the car queuing is about the same at 70. So our goal, as we move forward, is to get as many cars off the road, so that it will not continue in the condition that we see. We're looking at an 89% increase in students. That's one thing to keep in mind, as we're going through here. Eighty-nine percent. So, um, with our new site, site plan, our goal again was to get as many cars off the road as possible. One way to do that is to create a very long loop for cars that are in the morning, so that they can loop around and drop off students here on the side of the road. This morning queue is 37 cars long. Morning queues move very quickly. Parents drop off, kids get out, say goodbye, and off they go. So our morning queue doesn't need to be all that long, even though we're serving 70 cars in that 15-minute window. Our afternoon queue, again, 70 cars, but this is a queuing time. It takes a little bit longer, get the child from inside, out the door, find where, which car they're going to, get in the car, and then for that car to leave. So what we've done is increased the, the afternoon loop. You'll see here in the yellow, it comes all the way down, circles this play area here, and back out, and then picks up the students over here. Another traffic mitigation, uh, proposal that we have is to create a separate bus loop. So now you're not having the students who are getting in and off the bus interfering with the parents who are coming and dropping off. So buses will come in here and drop off within this circle. Now, in doing this, of course, we have to look at what we're, how we're protecting the students during the day. They're, um, from the parking. So there's, the entire play area back here will have a gate that is only open during that drop, during that queuing time. The gate does not open until it's time for parents to start queuing. At that point, all the students are either in the gym or the cafeteria, I mean, in their classroom or in the cafeteria, getting queued to either go to the bus or go to their parents. We also have a gate here, and this whole area here will be fenced, and another gate over here. And that is so that cars don't come down that driveway at any other time during the day, because those spaces will be used for play as well. This is what we're looking at for, for some plays. So the, the field that you see up here on the right-hand side, this is from a school that we recently have done. Um, it's 430-student school. That's a 6,000-square-foot turf field area, it's sitting in the middle of this playfield. You can make the hardscape area that goes around playful as well. So you have hardscape that moves all the way around here, it becomes part of the play. It can be foursquare, as you see here, hopscotch, hopscotch. I think there's a giant chess game somewhere else on this site too, as well. And you can create large play structures and climbing structures within this area. It serves 400 students or the group of students. And by creating multiple areas for children to play and spreading those out, you're allowing the, the students to have as much play space as possible and to be able to spread out. And you're allowing students to get the kind of exercise through these climbing structures. But these climbing structures actually have a large capacity for students, so they become very effective. And then you create separate players for the smaller students. So in this case, we would be putting a kindergarten play, um, play area adjacent to the kindergarten wing out here. And it would be dedicated, and of course fenced in and blocked off. And they would also have a hardscape play area for their, for, um, again, hopscotch, wall ball, foursquare, and those kinds of things. Uh, I'll get all the questions out, let me, I'm just going to keep going. We also have, um, different areas where we can create different outdoor kinds of learning. This is one, one particular one for an outdoor learning sensory garden. We have multiple things that we can do here, this is just one particular idea that we have room to do on this site. And this particular one, um, has outdoor chalkboards and learning centers, and it's a sensory garden. So as you're walking on the rocks, you're hearing different sounds. There's different plants within there, there's wind chimes, there's new birdhouses that the children can feed in this space as well. And then we have this hardscape area out front, and again, a 430-student school. You can see they're all gathered out there for Good Morning America, opening day. But you can see the capacity of these kinds of spaces, and you can imagine what they can do. This space here actually has two half, half basketball courts on it, here and here, and the giant chessboard, as well as several foursquare areas. It also works as a fire truck turnaround and bus turnaround. And while I'm talking about the, um, the safety for this additional, this whole walkway here, this is for a fire lane to get all the way around the building. So then moving forward, updating the traffic, because we know that is what everybody's looking at. Um, again, an 89% increase in students, effectively, this in, um, effectively, we're, sorry, we're affecting the school by 89%, but we are increasing the onsite parking by, sorry, I'm losing my numbers here, uh, increasing the onsite parking by three times as much. So we're doubling the students, increasing the parking, onsite parking by three times as much. And we are increasing the car queuing by six times as much in the morning and seven times as much in the afternoon, from what you have today. And if we remember where students are coming from, this is important too, when we start talking about, about the, the direction that people are coming. The, the blue dots are students who currently go to East Gloucester, so they would be coming to the site along this way and entering here. And then the East Gloucester students over here in blue would be coming this way. You see a concentration of red here, so most of those cars will either be coming through the neighborhood or again, along, um, East Main and up Webster. So when we gave this presentation, we had our traffic consultants with us at the time. So I'm going to try to do as good as they did and walk you through how they collected the data, and then how they analyzed the data. They analyzed four different points up around the site. One here at Friend Street, immediately exiting the site, and then coming onto the main intersection, and then the, the two intersections that, uh, off of, um, East Main, I mean, Eastern Ave, and each of those pieces. And they gathered data at both of those places over the course of an entire leap. And what they do is they analyze each of those intersections. And what they come up with is a level of service at each intersection. And then they grade those, um, levels of services from A to F. A being the best, F being the worst, kind of like at school. A means that you've only waited 10 seconds to go through that intersection. And F means that you waited about 80 seconds to go through that interception. And they actually measure and they count how many cars turn left, how many cars turn right, how many cars go straight, if they have that possibility, at each of those intersections. They analyze the data and they come up with the existing volumes for each of those intersections. And you see right here, you're doing okay. I mean, they're As, um, here and here, you have an A, B over here. Your biggest concern is over here on Yankee Division Highway, where there's a little bit more congestion because of the flow of traffic. Then they go back and they analyze the growth factor over the past, um, 10 years. And you can see they went back all the way to 2009, and they used that as their starting point. In 2010, you had no growth, no increase in traffic in that area. But in 2011, something interesting happened, and I guess it was Gloucester Crossing opened. And so when that opened, you got a 10% increase of traffic within that area, within that footprint that we were just talking about. But the following year, things kind of settled down a little bit, and you actually saw a negative increase. So it went down, the numbers didn't kind of stay the same, but you went down in your percentage of, um, of traffic. And then they, you can see over the course of the years, you know, you have one year in here where there's a six. They take the 10 years, they average them out, you get 17%. And they use this 17% to go forward and adjust how we're going to be looking at traffic over the course of the next 10 years. They use a new build model, and then they use the build model. They actually are extra conservative, and they use 2% instead of 1.7%. And so your level of services, if you don't do anything, you see a level of services change at this intersection here, where everyone from C to D to D to E. It got worse. You're going to see an increase in traffic over the 10 years, no matter what you do, it's going to increase. Whether you build or don't build. But everything else pretty much remained the same. And then if you look at the future build model, you see that this intersection remained fairly much the same, but with the increase of students and traffic on this site, this intersection here moved to a D in the morning and a B in the afternoon. And the difference is that you have a lot more traffic in the morning, because you have people leaving the neighborhoods to go to school. But in the afternoon, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, not everybody's coming home at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. Kids, thank you so much, kids are getting out of school. But there's still a number of traffic that is not coming into the site there. Excuse me, thank you. So, we started looking at what that might look like now on our site. As we start looking at some of these traffics coming through, I'm going to show you the flow of traffic and how we think that having this, um, loop, this extended loop, this loop is actually going to improve it. This is a morning drop-off configuration, and again, this is the shorter loop. Let me just watch it for a second here, it's very interesting. See some cars coming around, passing. It's supposed to, there we go. Sorry, I couldn't speed that up. Um, you're going to see a bus come in, go into the loop. You can see the cars stopping at the school for a few moments, dropping off their students. Cars continue to pull in, you see some cars parking. Comes the bus, bypasses, turns into the bus lane, and you're going to have cars exiting, turning left or right. That's your morning. And your afternoon, you're going to start queuing cars up. You're going to start queuing cars up, because parents arrive very early. So before you even open the doors, you're going to have the buses on site, you're going to have a long line of queued cars. They're being queued around that playground area that we talked about before. You're going to have some people taking up parking spaces to go in and get their students or talk to a teacher. So there's a lot more, um, traffic in that 15-minute window on the site. But, as you can see, I think we've gotten most of the cars off the road. We've certainly improved the situation that you have today, because we're getting all the traffic that you have on the road today off, and then we're taking care of the new traffic coming on as well. With that increase of, um, 300% of, uh, queuing here. I want you to watch this for a second, because I know it's kind of fun. There's a glitch in that, and you can see they have to wait for cars to pull out over here. So, well, we'll talk about walkers in a moment, thank you for asking. So we have some recommendations, as we move forward, to consider. And one of them, I'm not going to read all of these, but one of them is to create a right turn lane into the site. We can get about four or five cars into that extra queue, so that you can still have traffic moving up and down Webster Street as cars are queuing to go into the site. And the other is to create a right turn as you're leaving Webster Street onto Eastern Ave. This will help move the traffic along quicker. It will improve that intersection that you saw that, um, the, had turned into a, a D in the morning. Having a right turn only will allow cars that are circling back towards town to get onto that road a little bit quicker as well. So these are some of the, the, um, things that we're going to be starting to look at as we move forward and develop the rest of the site plan. That is what I have.
And, uh, thank you very much, we're going to be taking questions from the committee. And I know Melissa had one.
I had probably a lot, but I'm just going to go one at a time. So I'm going to go with the most recent, which is the traffic. So you said, uh, and I, I, you may not know this answer, because I know you're, you're speaking on behalf of the traffic study experts and they're not yet asked correctly, but, um, in the afternoon, when the section changed to a DE, I think it was, was most?
DP.
DP. Okay, but it went to a D, I think, or that was the worst time, was the D?
The morning becomes a D.
So is it the traffic that's coming from East Gloucester to the school that makes it the D? Like, in other words, do they track, are the cars coming down the highway, are they coming from Eastern Ave? Are they coming from beyond a set of lights? Like, what makes that a D? Like, is the traffic halt in one certain direction and another?
So currently, the, the D would be leaving Webster Street and on to Eastern Ave. Because you only have one lane currently. Even if you want to go right, your wait time is now increased to, um, 60 seconds. So a D is a 60-second. So you have to wait a whole minute now, I mean, in the future with that build. If we create this right turn lane, so that cars going towards town are out of that key line, that line will move quicker, as will the line turning left.
Were you talking about the 128? So I'm talking about the lights, I thought it was the intersection of the lights that was the idea, yeah.
Oh, at the lights, I'm sure that did go to a D to a E.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's what I meant. So was that traffic coming from East Gloucester to pick up the kids?
She said that happens.
That happens whether you build the school or not. That's a future.
So that's just based on the 17% increase, no matter what happens in Gloucester?
That's correct.
Not including beach traffic, or anything like that?
That's correct. Two, two percent for you. Two percent for you.
And, and the other thing to consider, that because there are lights there, I mean, you, there could be no cars there, but you got a red light, you're going to, you're going to sit there for 45 seconds.
If you're going left, right.
Yeah.
And so that was one of the recommendations, I think, is that you can, um, look at changing that light to be quicker during that, um, three weeks of school time.
And that's what I was trying to get at, because when we built the tech, we had the same problem. All the neighbors came out, said this traffic's not going to work, the end of the world, kids are going to die, people are going to get hit. And then we realized by just manipulating, putting in some lights and manipulating the timing during the drop-off and pickup, it flows beautiful. And that's on Route 62, that's a highway. So that's why I was trying to find out if the study went that far, to discuss those types of things.
So you have, I believe you have to file a warrant, or it depends who, whether the lights are managed by the state or by the city.
Right, yes.
And so if it's by the state, you have to file a warrant, if it's by the city, then they can manage lighting themselves.
Right, okay.
So, I do want to ask you, there's like, I have related questions.
Yeah, I can ask them if you want.
So, um, did the traffic study, so what I imagine is that, um, East Gloucester will be emptying out in two places. One will be coming down Eastern Ave, like from the Shaw's area, and the rest will be coming down, coming up 128 from the Bass satellite. So it will take a right at the Bass satellites, queue up at the Eastern Ave, um, 128 intersection, take a left and, and right. So my question is, did the traffic study consider? So my question is, did the traffic study consider the impact that once the Webster Street intersection goes from A to a D, and now theoretically we have cars backing up into the Eastern Ave life, which already gonna be a D or a E, you know, as it is, you know, are we now at an issue where we've got parents who are taking a left, getting caught by a red light in the middle? There's dominant effects. There's some protocols thought about, you address to make sure that...
Right, so in those recommendations, some of those are the light control? So if you're controlling those lights? The other part was adding that main, that right-turn lane, so that gets cars into the site quicker and off the road quicker? And manipulating some of those pieces that you have the ability to do?
Right, so yes, the intersection, the lights was considered all four directions, not just the one direction that gets over to Webster Street.
Yeah, so when they do the traffic study, they actually count, again, cars that go left, cars that go straight, cars that go right. They count every single car, the direction that it's turning.
And the other thing, the reason that in the Webster Street Eastern Avenue intersection deteriorated time-wise, it wasn't people turning off of Eastern Avenue from 128 to go up Webster Street. It was people coming down Webster Street trying to get onto Eastern Avenue.
Correct, that's correct. It was that downward.
That's where the wait.
Right, so they're backing up.
Taking your right or left at Eastern Ave?
Either one. But coming down Webster Street.
Because there's only one lane. They're waiting more than a minute.
If you're coming out of the lights and turning up Webster Street because of the queues, you know, catch a bit of...
I just, well, just to clarify, 'cause I believe the sheet is a dedicated left-turn lane, but you said a dedicated right-turn lane, so I just wanna be clear. See, an exclusive left turn, so, yes.
So that means?
Because right now it's one lane. So they want a lane that's going left towards, and a lane that's going right.
So off Webster, onto Eastern, going toward right there. Okay, and this, my second question related to this, and this may be beyond the scope, is, ideally, we're not, we're in a world where, you know, the climate is changing, et cetera. So we could have more public transportation bringing kids to the school. And I don't know if, I mean, that would be the goal, I would think. So I'm just wondering if there, I don't know if this is in the scope or if there's a way to sort of, I don't know, somehow encourage that type of motion, transportation-wise, within the modeling.
Right, so, you know, that comes back to the community to, you know, to encourage people to take the buses. They're free buses, or the cost is low enough so the parents can afford to do it. We have, one of the recommendations was a walking school bus. So you're encouraging students to walk together with parental supervision, and they just stop at each of the houses and pick up different students along the way. We've seen that be very successful in other communities. So there's a lot that you can do to change the culture and thinking about how to get to school.
Can you just follow us on that? How did you determine how many cars would be dropping off?
We multiplied by 89%. So we took the current problem number and increased it by 89%.
So, which was very conservative. Right, so in theory, a lot of the East Gloucester kids that might have been walking are likely gonna qualify for the bus at that point, right?
Yes.
So that's gonna...
If we have drivers.
If what?
We have drivers, right.
So I would assume that that reduces the number of cars dropping off as long as they, yeah, in theory, if we can encourage people to drop off. Because I think, back to Laura's point, I think the goal needs to be kids riding the bus and or walking, right? So not design the whole study around the goal being how many cars can we fit in? And that goes back to us as a committee to really problem-solve around that. But I don't really, I don't feel like the goal should be how many cars can we fit in.
So we went to the most conservative number. I mean, if you were to look at the traffic study analysis and the folks and documents that they have, that number would be much lower. We just know that, you know, as a group of people, you see a lot of cars dropping up at East Gloucester, even though it's a walking neighborhood. There's a lot of cars coming to drop off students and pick up them up. Maybe that changes, maybe it doesn't. You see the same thing happening over at Veterans, where there's a lot of cars parked in the side of the road. Even if those students might be within walking distance, they're getting driven to school. One reason or another.
So to that end, we talked about this probably a year ago. We were dealing with the West Parish problem. And there was this talk about if it makes sense to, the next one, to address this problem by saying, "Okay, we're just gonna really get a lot of capacity on site," or are we gonna push the other ways? My question would be, if we had gone the other way and said, "You know what? We're just gonna send a message that says, 'If you go into East Gloucester, vets, take the bus, 'cause drop-off is not gonna be very accommodating. This is a bus or a walking type of school,'" is there spaces on this very limited site that could've been recovered? Now, we didn't have to worry about adding this secondary loop around the play space. Does that 6,000 square foot field become 8,000 square foot field?
I can't tell you what the number is, but it becomes big.
That'd be, I mean, it's before it's too far. You know, with this guidance from this committee toward the building, maybe about what our philosophy about how the school is acting. Hey, listen, we don't wanna encourage, you know, 70 cars in a 15-minute window coming through. We wanna say, "Listen, this is a bus school, this is a walking school." You know, and if you do that, we're gonna, because of what it said, we're gonna maximize. We don't wanna take up space that can be used for every recess, every before-school, every after-school, except for 15 minutes. We can stuff a bunch of cars, right?
Accommodating cars, accommodating kids.
Right, right. It's definitely a trade-off, as we see.
And to that point, I mean, so it seems like what you're showing us are these hardtop areas that can be, have multipurpose uses, right? So that they can be fenced off and kids can safely play.
Thinking to the future, in a world where hopefully people drive their individual cars less and less, would those spaces be able to be functional in new ways? Say we change in five to seven years and convince people to drive less in this context?
I would say that you always want hardscape play. You always want a place to bounce a ball, to do some jump ropes. So maybe they're, they just become dedicated hardscape play so that you can always use it and you don't have to open it up for that. We still have the emergency loop that goes around the back, so you're still going to have to have some hardscape that can handle a fire truck that comes around there. And the width of that needs to accommodate, you know, the truck and the safety. So maybe you wanna keep some of that? I don't think it would turn to green space, but maybe some of it could. Maybe the bathroom could.
And just because of the separate thing we're doing with our budget, like, there's so much hardscape that needs repair. And I don't know if the technology has improved around hardscaping.
It wasn't made of.
Yeah, and how durable is it?
Do you get plowed, salted, what do you do with it?
Well, it probably won't get salted, but it will have to be maintained, especially the safety lane for the fire trucks. All of that has to be plowed regularly.
You know, if, right now, if the parking lot one of the schools, you know, develops a crack or a pothole, the DPW and the paving company that the city contracts with, you know, the basic, it's called cabins, it's your normal asphalt paving, right? Is this something that's gonna be beyond the scope of a DPW crew in a yellow truck is gonna get out there and patch? You're trying to say, is it a different material or is this just colored paving? What are we looking at?
Painted asphalt.
Painted asphalt. So DPW, you're gonna go repair?
The DPW could repair, right? I mean, it's...
I don't know, so I was asking.
Yeah, and it's painted asphalt.
Well, sometimes there's the rubber, you know.
That's a different, that's a different area where Michelle showed some of the actual designated play areas. That's a different.
Yeah, the rubber surface will be under any of the play structures. As you see, the child there is running on a rubber surface. This whole area back here, adjacent to the, this is all rubberized surface all over here.
Well, I just wanted to comment on Laura's comment about the hardscape and the concern, grass versus hardscape and things like that. And I just wanted to mention, I don't know that you were on the committee when I did, but I went down, I think it was October, and observed the recesses of veterans on three different occasions. And on all three occasions, I observed the kids to be, I'd say, 97% on the play areas, the climbing and all that, and very few, I would say, under five, were going out in the field and playing. So that was a natural observation, to see that kids go towards these kind of things. Even though it's called hardscape, it doesn't mean it's not fun and it's not attractive. So that's a lesson that I learned, 'cause I thought kids wanna run around the field, they wanna chase each other. But believe it or not, it was these types of play areas, like you see at West Parish during the summer, around the school areas, that are filled with kids playing, and they gravitate and go into West Parish because they are new and exciting to play on and safe.
And the other thing to keep in mind is that there is maintenance involved, more maintenance involved in grass.
So that's another question, is what considerations, yeah, what considerations are being taken into, will make these decisions about the designs as far as, you know, longevity and need for maintenance? I'll give you an example. We had the principal of Plunko come to us a week ago. She said that a plastic slide on a very standard piece of play area broke two years ago. And DPW put a piece of plywood up and asked them to fix a plastic slide, a normal plastic slide, for two years. That's what we operate with in the city of Gloucester. And so I get nervous when I see those really cool sensory garden of going, you know, the first time the plow actually scoops out all those rocks, it gets down just the lining. Those rocks are never going back. And so unfortunately, you know, with the playscape, with the grounds, and even with the building itself, I'm nervous in that. Perfect example is West Parish, right? Very, very pretty school. When you turn it over to the city, you say, "Hey, listen, here's things you gotta do." We're already way behind in maintaining the gym floor. We were told we need to do some refinishing of the decorative wood palms that are up front. We haven't done that. So I'm nervous about this design. It's almost like you're giving us too much credit as a community to take care of our stuff. And I'm afraid, it's the honest truth, right? I would like to see things that are just like made of super durable, super low maintenance, even if it's not as exciting or as pretty or as attractive. Because the reality is, if a really beautiful playscape that falls apart and becomes, you know, cordoned off because we can't fix the slide with all the complicated things, I would rather have us have chosen a more simpler design for the school, for the playscape, for the playground. Not to say this is not, this looks beautiful, right? But we're kinda proving right now over West Parish that we can't take care of beautiful. And so when I see things that, you know, look like this, I go, "This is, you know, this is not for us," right? The whole reason we're in this situation is we didn't take care of our schools in the first place, right? And now we're actually doing nice things in. And so I'm just nervous about the direction we're taking our design. I don't know if quality is gonna get anything pretty bad. I'm nervous about the direction we're taking.
I will tell you, I will tell you that even ugly needs to be maintained. So, I mean, you have to maintain, no matter what it is.
I think it should also be clarified that these are illustrated, they're not chosen.
No, no, no.
So you're...
And let it be clear too, that you keep throwing the administration. Ask for your chef to put in a new slide. DPW is not responsible for putting a slide. You put in an order what needs to be repaired and not needs to be repaired. Slide is not about a building. Slide is not that. We're doing your roofs, we did the heating system up there. We're doing the field towels, we're doing the bleachers. That should've not been that way. We're doing everything else. So if you wanted a slide, ask your Gloucester Education Foundation to get you a slide. Okay, so now, let's not go by DPW and how we don't repair them.
It's our DPW.
Well, you know what, no. Now it's mine when you stop throwing them under the bus. Like I know about the buses the same day of the school committee. Stop throwing them the city side under the bus.
There's the city side, we're all...
Well, if we're all city side, then we wouldn't be here in the first place.
All right, come on, let's calm down.
If I could just add, and we're all concerned about our buildings, it's earnest. But we were at the DPW bi-weekly meeting yesterday, and both of the things that you mentioned, the wood on the outside and the...
The whole layer.
And the gym floor are all scheduled to be done, both are scheduled to be done this summer.
Sure, but that's years behind.
No, no.
Not according to DPW, okay?
Michelle can explain.
I can speak to that. It's not years behind, right? I mean, the school's...
Four years.
The material that's on the outside, right? We took a great amount of care to go and specify what that needed to be. And it's just fine, right? What it's gonna need coming up is a maintenance goal. If it's scheduled, we're very glad to hear that, right? I was out at the gym the other day. Gym seems to be just fine. So I don't think they're falling behind on this stuff. I think it...
50 years.
Pardon?
I'm sorry, but 50 years. We took over, I'm sorry, but we took over the schools.
Yeah.
And when we took them off, they were deplorable. And then we build new things, sorry, and then they fall down. And we feel like to call the company saying, "Where's our guarantee?" So we're repairing those too. So you know what? I get upset 'cause I'm working on a budget. It has nothing to do with the two schools. I've been hearing it. Last week, for the first time, I heard about a bus driver. We don't have bus drivers, okay? At a school committee. I absolutely got buses. You know what? Sometimes it needs a lot more. And I'm glad now the school administration with my DPW are working closely. So when you do a work order, because some of my teachers were deplorable, some of the places they were working, I'm going, "You know when you have to work there? Let's do something." My teachers, and I walked through the high school and we did that. I said, "In five years, what we've done and how we work together is amazing." I, for the first time, just saw the same thing that you're all saying that she just talked about East Gloucester School. I went, "What the hell is that?" I am the mayor of the city of Gloucester and I've never seen or heard about it. And I see it now for the first time, and I'm going, "What's she talking about?" And I go look at it. So is it the lack of the DPW or the lack of communication of what's happening to our schools?
Samantha?
I think the overall picture, so Laura and I are new to the committee. We haven't actually been able to ask you guys questions yet. We've come to meetings, but not been able to ask questions. So forgive me if you've already talked about this, but I think the overall message is, when you look at the overall costs, what is necessary and what is excessive, right? And like, what's, when I look at, and we talked about this at the last meeting, West Parish and this project are well above the average on the MSBA site. And so what, why? Why is it well above the average? What is the, when I looked, I went through the sort of cost breakdown. It's really hard for a layperson to really understand what the cost is. But I would like to understand, out of this, what is necessary and what is sort of not necessary?
And to take that further, 'cause you're gonna answer this question, what is sustainable and what's not? Like, the wood on the outside of West Parish, do we need that? What can we do brick instead and not have to do the wood?
Yeah, no big questions, right? So this is, this is the one that you were trying to interpret, right?
Yes.
So this data is available on the MSBA's website. And I wanna be clear that, you know, we've manipulated this, not the data. So all the data points are the same, but we manipulated it just a little bit graphically. And so you can see, you know, this goes back all the way back to, you know, 2009. So it's a pretty good representation of schools. And when we talk about cost, right, I think about it in a couple of different ways. So I think about it in terms of absolute cost. So what does this project cost to the city of Gloucester? Is it $10 million? Is it $70 million? It's the absolute number of dollars that it's gonna cost. Another way of looking at it, right, because they have all these different metrics, is what's it gonna mean as a cost to the average homeowner and tax payer? And so we're gonna take that absolute cost, and then, you know, the city and John Donne are gonna plug it into a magic formula and they're gonna say, "This is what that's gonna mean, you know, kind of on your tax bill." And then another way of looking at it, which is what this, we refer to it as a scatter diagram, right, is kind of more of a comparative analysis of what this means through schools throughout the Commonwealth, right, that the MSBA is involved with. So this is giving you kind of a good sense of what does school X look like as compared to all of the others? So all still making sense, right? And so when you think about how you calculate area, if you're to calculate area, you know, in a rectangle or something, that's one times the width gives you the area. So similarly, when we look at costs, we're looking at what's the unit cost, which is really what this is, you know, dollars per square foot times the area of what the building is, right?[1708.58] times the area of what the building is, right? How many square feet is that building? So the square footage of a building is defined by the program. So Michelle talked a little bit about that earlier when we were talking about this. So this, this program, correct? It's defined both by the educational objectives of the district, as well as, you know, kind of staying within the MSBA guidelines. So that box is fairly well-defined and fairly well-contained. So most schools, not all, but most schools are playing generally within, you know, kind of that, that, that area. What's that? And then, and so then the other thing is, so if, if that's, if that's changing, right, now we're talking about the cost of that, what are the, the different things that are impacting that cost, right, that unit cost? And so you can see on the far circle there, right, that's where, right, East Gloucester School is currently situated, right? And we don't really have that much data that's, you know, kind of moving forward. It's, it's almost the first one, right, in this next box that's gonna be established. So the blue line is what you'll actually go and see on the MSBA website. And, and that, that data is more empirical, so they're able to actually go with, you know, a high level of confidence and say, this is what this average cost is, because that's what that curve is. All of the other data points out there, some of them are historical, some of them aren't. So, you know, over time, when they all get done, they'll continue to stand up a little. So for the time being, perhaps being able to do that, we've actually gone and looked at, based on all of those data points out there, what is the average? And so this is more of a trending line, if you will. And you can see, like, when you take that out, you know, where this trend is going is basically just a little bit below where East Gloucester is currently situated. So that dollars, that unit price value is $612, and it's high, right? In, in terms of the other ones, above, above what you see previously, right, what you would expect, because over time, right, costs continue to go up. But the other thing that's a little bit different about that number, right, is that one, that number has no real design input yet. So that, that number was based on estimates that we had, even before, we had floor plans and there's been some massing models. But when that was done, it's what was done at the preferred schematic report stage. Where it's really much more of a comparative analysis between the options that you consider. So you're really trying to understand option A, option B, option C, what are those, you know, how do those relate to each other? Addition renovation, for example, as compared to new construction, right? Site X as compared to site Y. And so it gives you a comparative analysis between the two, but we really haven't had an opportunity yet, because we're just getting going on the design right now. So that number ultimately, when we get to schematic, right, will be adjusted based on what the design of the building actually is. And that's ongoing. So at that stage, we tend to wanna be somewhat conservative because we don't know, right? And I think it's always better to go down in your price rather than to go up in your price. And the other thing is, is that we have a few things that are atypical as compared to a lot of those data points in those other schools that are out there, okay? Both the West Parish project and this project are, have very challenging sites, right? We know we have challenging ground conditions where, based on the geotechnical we reviewed here for, you know, veterans, the veterans site, as well as the Green Street site, as well as West Parish site, all of those require, require ground improvement, right? And that's a significant additional cost as compared to when you're able to go out there and not have to do that. And that happens.
You're saying Green Street was also.
Geotechnically.
Geotechnically difficult.
It would have been, it would have been challenged.
Is there a place on this island that isn't?
No, I mean, you know, and they're not making, you know, no one's making new land, so, right? And, and, you know, the more urban it gets, the harder it becomes to find. We also had, as, as you all know, right, we had a cost that was included, included here to address the relocation of the softball field. We also had in this cost two mitigation, you know, hazardous removals for both the East Gloucester School and the Veterans School. So we had an extra one as compared to, you know, if you were going one school. So there's a number of those types of costs and what I'll call anomalies, right, that drove, helped to drive this cost up. So as, as we move forward, right, we anticipate actually, just based on getting some of those design, you know, conditions understood, being able to hopefully take some of that conservatism out and make that, you know, something that would be, hopefully like right on the line or maybe a little bit below the line, right? And now comparatively, we have a school that we say, okay, you know, that makes sense. If it's a little, if it's on the line, right, you know, we're still carrying additional ground improvements and those types of things, which you don't have to run all the schools. So, you know, if, if, if this, if this one, you know, once this box was created, you know, you can see costs are going up fast in the construction world. I spent pretty much all day today before I came here at an estimate reconciliation for $150, $150 million dollar middle high school. And costs are up significantly over the past two to three years. Construction time, when you go down to Boston and, and, you know, it's the same electricians that are working in Boston that are competing for all of these construction jobs as well. And it's busy. So you can see the, you know, kind of the slope of that curve, you know, it's, it's going faster. And those types of costs are also imputed into that estimate that we've done to accommodate, you know, an escalation, you know, kind of curve that's going like this versus like this. And, and hopefully that doesn't materialize, right? And then you'll have cost savings and that'll be great. But, you know, that's, that's kind of an understanding of some of the information of why that cost was developed at that number. And, you know, you can see how it relates to where it's trending. And, you know, once we're able to go in the next few months, establish what the schematic design actually is, we'll know, we'll have a benchmark. We'll say, this is what the building is. We'll say, okay, now where do we think that is? And if that's still at that number, then we should be thinking about what things should we be taking out of that project and value engineering out of that project to get it in line with what your budget expectations are. But we don't know what we can take out until we know what we've put in, right? So now we're at the point where we're trying to design to understand what it is. We're very conscious as a design team right now, okay? Not just because we're getting asked questions at school committee meetings in Gloucester about, you know, what can we do to improve the cost of this project. But we have a similar, you know, concern or discussion that's taken place at down on 40 Cross Street in, in Boston with MSBA, right? They're watching this too, because, you know, they also have a limited budget that they have to go and fund all of these projects for. So they watch these cost curves pretty close. So.
Can you talk a little bit more about that? Because I think some people that don't understand the MSBA process, because we've only done in Gloucester one project, they don't understand the oversight from the state. You know, they, it's almost like, is it an open checkbook to design whatever we want? And then MSBA says, sure, here you go, but we're only reimbursing you so much. I mean, can you explain a little bit about the oversight that the state has on the financials? So that anyone who's watching knows that it is oversight and it's not just our decision on how much we spend and what we want?
Yeah, so I, I think it's, it's, it's oversight in terms of making sure you're following a process. But it's not oversight specifically saying you can only spend this much money, because they look at it and they say, you know, this is your community, right? And you want to educate your students the way that you want to educate your students. So kind of where they're, kind of where the, the, kind of more.
Like the CM at risk, you know, when you do CM at risk?
Yeah.
You know, things like that, that there are, there is ways to have oversight.
I think the, the most, the most obvious way of saying oversight is talking about the program square footage, right? So they have guidelines, you know, this is that other metric, right? So they're gonna go and say, for classrooms, for classrooms, based, if you're following the guidelines, should be about 950 square feet. If you decide that you wanna go and build 2,000 square foot classrooms, they're not gonna tell you no. They're gonna recommend and ask you questions, why are you doing that? But they're gonna go and, and say, we're not gonna reimburse you for that, right? We're not gonna reimburse you for that or for the grossing factor that goes along with that. And they're gonna make sure that the mayor knows, right, and everybody on the school committee knows that, hey, by the way, right, you know, you're kind of outside of the box on this one. So I, I don't wanna go and, and say that, you know, that there's somebody down there, right, that's saying, you can only do this. It's not that. But they're, they're providing you, you know, and with this information, you're able to go and see and ask these, what I think is a legitimate question to go and say, you know, how far out of the bandwidth are we? And what I'm saying is, I think right now, you know, we're not that far out of the bandwidth. Unfortunately, costs are going up. But I think, you know, based on what I'm trying to explain to you, I think there's opportunity to move some of those things down. And we'll have a better understanding of that once we get that next point. One other point, okay, in terms of a check and balance. So when we go and design it, okay, we have an independent estimator, right? It's not the one way that estimates that. We have an independent estimator that goes and estimates it and they do it over here. You'll also have, right, another estimator, maybe on this job, maybe even three estimators, right? Which will go and look at that same, you know, design and come up and say, this is what we think the cost of that is.
And who brings in those estimators?
So one of them is retained by our firm as part of the design contract. Tom and, and his group is EOPM, right? And then, okay, we'll have a contractor in, in this instance also be providing, right? So it's, it's three different sets of eyes to go, and, and then there's the, like, the process that I went through today, right? There's a reconciliation process to go through and make sure everybody's looking at the same thing, understanding what that is. And, you know, it's not gonna perfectly line up, but there's a discussion that takes place so that everybody understands, you know? And the estimator, you know, there's only so many estimators out there, right? And, and ultimately, you know, the estimate that we use probably does 70% of the jobs in Massachusetts. So they have a very good backlog and are pretty current in being able to try and, and, you know, and say, hey, we're seeing spike right now. We're seeing a huge spike in Ten Knockers, which are the people that do the ductwork by the HVAC. It's through the roof right now, so.
Thank you.
Samantha?
Could, just on that exact same note, could you just speak to sort of prevailing wage and how it impacts the costs here? Just because I've hea, I've heard people sort of say, this seems way out of the ballpark in comparison to like personal building costs, right? Like if you were to like.
Well, for sure. So, so.
So it's, it's hard to explain, like, I didn't know anything until I came on the school committee about prevailing wage, because I'm on the contracting business. So could you just speak to that and?
Yeah. So prevailing, prevailing wage is basically saying that, you know, you're, you're establishing, what, what the prevailing wage is based on essentially a, a union wage rate for all intents and purposes, right? That doesn't, that doesn't mean that it's limited to union employee, uh, union shops. But if you're a non-union shop and you were to come in and say, you know, you're bidding the job and, you know, you wanna go out, you're gonna have to pay that same rate. So for an electrician, you're able to go out and there's a wage rate sheet that we would go and file. Contemporary is when the, when the project is going out into the market. And then that's what everybody is going to have to go and pay, right, those, those trades in order to do it. And, you know, it's, it's very different when you have a prescribed rate that's based on all of that versus if you're doing a residential construction job, right? And, and the other thing to understand here is this is not a residential construction type building. This is, as the mayor said, this is a 50-year building, right? It, it's, you know, it's built to last and, you know, you're gonna have hundreds of kids that are going through this every day. So it's, it's not where you're going and specifying kind of lower, lower grade, let's just say, or less durable type of tariffs. So that cost model.
Right. And if that's a state requirement, right, because it's a state-owned building, is that right?
It's an MSBA requirement to go and have a 50-year building. And let's just talk about that because it's important.
I mean, the, the.
State wages.
The prevailing, the state wages.
Yes.
That's the law. So, because I've heard people say that, you know, MSBA is driving up costs. But really, if we didn't go through MSBA, those same costs would exist.
The cost to you would be higher because you don't have a partner sharing in those costs, right? Your unit price might be the same, but the absolute number back to you, right, would be greater.
And when you see charter schools getting built in shorter amount of time, they're not built to last 50 years.
So, so I, I don't wanna really go down into that. It's not something I do a lot.
I've heard those comparisons and I've just, I've just heard the comparisons that like, they can build a charter school for X amount of money, you know, multi-million dollars less. But that, the standards are not necessarily the same and they might not.
Yeah, it, it's not a prevailing wage issue on that, but I, I think it's a different type of building. It's a different type of building. That'd be mine.
Laura?
Just looking at this chart, I'm wondering if you, I don't know if you know, but if you could speak to, on the high, get close to where we are now, looking in our circle.
Yeah.
What would make one school at that highest end and what's?
This, this, that soldier?
And then the lowest. Like what, you could just give me a sense of what some of the differences are.
So that, that project, right, it'll remain uninformed. You can go find it if you want. Well, no, no.
It's, it's Lumber and, and they're the, the president.
It's not.
It's wall fam.
It's wall fam.
400 million.
So, so there, but there, there are a lot of different factors that are impacting that in terms of, you know, site acquisition costs and what they have. And I, and I really don't know all the specifics, but I know that there's an awful lot that's having to go on with that building. And, and these are decisions, right, that that community, okay, decided that they wanted to do.
When you see a situation like they wanna put up performing arts in the building, but yet it's not reimbursable?
Correct.
Like.
Those, those types, those types of things.
Or a pool or something, yeah.
Yeah, and, and like, again, I don't know the specifics of that project.
But is that an example that would?
So there are certainly things that are not reimbursable, right? But, you know, maybe a community ends up having that as part of their program and they get that worked out. And then that, you know, is what, what drives that unit rate up.
And then the lower.
Yeah.
I just, I just, I'm trying to get a sense of like what, what decisions put people and put buildings in different places on that.
So some of these, you know, some of these projects might, you know, have, might, for example, if it was a very tight urban site, they might be no parking lot, no, right, and it doesn't require ground improvement. They're not concerned. They're kind of taking the, the, the position that you guys were taking a little while ago. It's like, we don't need to build roads to have park, to have parking queues. Uh, you know, there's, there's an infinite number of reasons that can drive those types of costs.
So that's, I mean, those are some examples.
Some of them might be addition renovation, you know, some, yeah, it's all of it up.
Okay, so thank you. And if we didn't have two buildings tear down, it would have dropped a little bit lower. With some, one building is tear down or none is tear down.
Yeah.
And discuss this. And discuss this.
So I want, I just wanna push back on a couple of things you said, to just get a little more information. The first one, it's just, just then, you said it before, it's right there. These lower numbers meant be addition renovation. But my understanding from what we were told through the West Parish project, we were told this project, is that additions renovations are more expensive, or at least they were for us, considerably more expensive to renovate than what we have and to build new. And I'm curious as to why you would think the cheaper ones might be the addition renovations when we've been told that renovating and adding additions to our existing schools are more expensive than just knocking it down and putting the new ones up.
Great question. So part of that has to do with fact, it's like the area calculation, right? So some of these things, right, you might be ending up having a more economical or more efficient building that drives down the square footage of the building, right? But it might have a higher unit, unit rate. Conversely, you know, you could have an addition renovation, which is less efficient, right? So you have more square footage, but you have a lower unit rate, right? And then this is reflecting lower unit prices, right? So it, it, again, it really depends on, you know, looking at, and this, this is, this is why the MSBA process is really good. Because what it does is it forces communities to go and look at their individual situation, right? And making informed decisions based on their particular situation. So here, what we did is we looked at a whole host of different things, right? We looked at addition renovation. We looked at just going and building, bringing the building kind of up to code, if you will. We looked at, you know, different sites. And everybody has those, right? And, and you make that value decision based on what you want as a community.
So I can continue. So I also wanna push back on the trend line you've inserted. So the blue line on your chart, what MSBA provided, you've interpreted the data, interpreted the data to produce your orange trend line.
Yeah, it's just, so to be clear on what that is, that's the average cost.
Yeah, so I, so I understand. So I wanna push back on that for a couple of reasons. I think it's, I'm guessing, I don't think it's intentionally to say, but I think it is misleading to look at it this way. Just from a practical standpoint, what you have here is you have wall fam essentially skewing the hell out of that line. If you look at that line, it bisects two squares. There are three squares above it plus wall fam, us above it. And then there are about 10 below it. And they're further below, they're, they're further distance from that line than the ones that are sitting above.
Yeah.
So if you were to delete wall fam out, which is a clear outlier, that trend line, I think, would be much closer to the larger grouping.
I, I think, I think it would come out, I think it would come out somewhere right around here. That's, that's my guess.
Which would be, um, um, you know, which would show, actually, we, we have this little spot, we're able to draw a circle around it that's big enough that the circle connects with the line. It gives us the impression that we're not.
Sure. No, no, listen, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, but then the same thing, right, is true of any of these outliers. So I'm just trying to replicate the methodology that was used going, you know, from the other ones.
One of those outliers being West Parish, unfortunately. And the other thing I wanna point out is just that there's your box argument. These boxes might be staying their school years. And so if you look at those two crosses that have yet to been, uh, be voted, crosses that have yet to be voted on, right? Boxes are approved and crosses need to be voted on, is that correct?
Cro, the, the plus signs are, are at the PSR station.
Okay. So even though you're saying, you know, we're starting a new box, we're September of 21. And those two, the two closest in time to us are both July of 21. They're only eight weeks behind, or eight weeks ahead of us. And one's 480 square foot and one's 481 square foot. Again, appreciating what you said about what can drive those numbers around.
I don't know.
I just don't wanna say, you know, that, you seem to suggest that when this new box, this new 21, 22 school year starts, you'll see things up here. Because costs are getting so, um, costs are rising quickly. But those two projects are two, are eight weeks ahead of us. weeks ahead of us, and they're a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty dollars less per square foot.
So we'll see.
Sure, fair enough.
You know why?
Because they might go up and you might come down, they might have different methodology for how they.
We'll, we'll see, but, you know, and, and again, I'm not trying to, there's no manipulation of any numbers here, right? Those are, those are just the data points and I tried to replicate it, right? But, and, and maybe you're right, maybe everything goes down. The last three of those have not.
Sure, and so, so I'm getting to with this, uh, one of the, and lastly, I want to push back on this, the consolidation you have in that chart, um, the, the switch school that failed at the vote, that was a consolidation, two buildings coming down, that was 450 square foot, right along the median, despite the fact they had two schools nearly come down, so it's, you know, I appreciate that maybe one of the reasons why our costs are going up, but again, there were other projects on that, at least one that I can find, and if I did research, maybe others where schools were being consolidated, they had the same issue of.
May, may, maybe, again, I don't, I don't know.
So, I am getting to, I'm getting to something, I promise, is that if this school committee, I'm not saying it will, because I'm just one person, but this school committee, you know, talked about it and said, hey, we want to communicate to the building committee that, you know, in the same way that when the teachers come to us and ask for raises, we say, hey, listen, we're middle of the road, I'm sorry, we can't give you this money that's above, you know, we said, we, we pulled the dart chart, we go, hey, listen, you know, we're not first, we're not 10th, we're right here in the middle, and that's where we're going to stay, that's what we tell, you know, our teachers, we're negotiating what we can afford to pay them. And we said to the building committee, the Sandy Fitz, hey, listen, we are a middle-of-the-road community, and we are not going to talk, we, the school committee, which has to eventually sign off on the building committee's producing, I believe, right? We, the school committee, saying, we are not going to allow the building committee to come back with a design that exceeds the median. Is it possible, given the, the site that's been chosen, the difficulties inherent in it, and the program we are looking to do, do you foresee the ability for the building committee and your, your group to take that direction if it was given and go, okay, yeah, we can come back and we can get this program done, and we can get it done, that's, and we can hit these targets, and I'm sorry, you know, it won't be as nice looking as West Parish, it might not be as nice looking as the sample we saw, but it'll be, you know, it'll be, um, it'll be, it'll be a school that hits the educational things we're trying to hit, is that, is that within the realm of possibility of this, I'd say that?
Right, time, time is critical on, on all those things too, right? Of course, right? Because we, we, we march down the road with this, right, based on the best information that we have, which is given by, you know, kind of the building committee and, well, for us, it's building committee, right? And so we take our direction there, you know, in, in terms of what expectations are and, and we respond to those, um, you know, and that, that, that's what we do. So if everybody said, yeah, you know, all I want is, or we talked about this, uh, another is just, everything's just going to be made out of concrete block, and, you know, just put a window here and a window there, you know, and you said, that's what you, we want to do, uh, we respond to that, right? I don't, I don't know if that's the right answer, but again, this is, this is, this is your school, right? And it's your community, and we respond to the direction, right, that we, that we take from you.
And I also just want to clarify, there has been no, um, cost direction discussed, what, um, really, you know, it's basically what you're saying, we want a middle-of-the-road school, is kind of the assumption at the table. Um, and so, you know, to think otherwise, it's, it's not true. And the response is that what they're working on is the educational program that's been worked on with teachers and the district and special ed director and things like that. So, so the work to date in terms of layout and everything has to do with meeting those educational requirements such as co-teaching. Um, it hasn't been, what's this material here, or what's this there, and what's the size? It hasn't been any, it hasn't been talked about in terms of range and how it impacts costs.
But just to that, kind of just add, but we did see in the beginning of this that there was a choice made to build a separate stage and a separate space, like, so there was a choice made, right, to adjust the design in that way, which I'm assuming costs more, right? Because that expanded the size of the gym and then the bleach and the seating in the gym, so.
That's correct.
Right, so we're, we're already in that. Um, I, I don't know how this works, but if we, in the sense that if we want these things and want everyone's input and to get all these things that we want, and we want a middle-of-the-road school, like, those things are not, they're not the same things. Um, so it does, and you're supporting your direction, you're getting that direction, so you adjust the plans to accommodate that.
Exactly.
But we just started with that, that was the first thing we learned about change, so.
Right, and I guess what I'm saying is that, very, and for the record, I was, I'm so happy to see a stage, I was so bummed out about West Parish being happy with it, I'm so happy for these things, right? But again, if the school, if, with to see a lot more plastic around the school to get a stage, and again, I'm just one person up here, in my mind, it can back to me with, kind of, I don't want to use the word spartan, but like, you know, um, a more pragmatic figure, this, this is not, this, it's not going to be like, oh, male and hideous, but it's not going to win any awards for, I'm sorry, you're not going to get any awards for your architecture on this one, like, you know, it'll be just a, a job you got done, you did a good job for us, you know, like.
I don't know where that comes, but I'm just saying, we're making adjustments already to make a more beautiful school that is more functional for what people want, but that's, you know, those are choices, those, those choices cost money.
The, the thing that we got to keep in mind right now is that this city has an incredible history of trying to do things cheaply, and the high school is a testament to that. And the renovation that was done in the high school was value engineered to death, to the point where they put door handles in that could be broken by any kid, a floor that was, was not going to hold up for, for a year in the gym.
It's the maintenance.
Um, and it's not maintenance, it was designed, it was poor design and it was value engineering. And the.
That diagram is such a problem.
One of the things that you, we, we have discussed and, and, and need to know is, you make decisions, you can buy a good set of hardware for the doors that cost $300, or you can buy a $75 one, but you've got to replace the $75 one in five years. And those are the decisions that, that have to be made along the line. You can put in granite curving, or you can put in cement curving around the building. Now, the, the, the general consensus that we've been giving from the, from the building committee to the designer is that we want the, a, a good, solid, long-lasting building. The other things that have happened is, is we're listening to the complaints of the community and the concerns of the community. And one of the two, um, three things that people have complained about West Parish, the pickup and drop off, the stage being too low, and there being no space around the, the gym for, for, for spectators. All of those things have been addressed in this design. And as we talk about, um, community use, on Front Street, there used to be a basket, a couple of basketball courts that got taken, well, they got into parking, turned, turned into parking. And that before that, there was a very vibrant adult basketball league that played there, they had lights, they played there all summer long, every night. But what you're going to have right in that neighborhood now is a regulation basketball court with enough room for people to stand around and watch a game that's going to be accessible year-round. So, you know, these are the, and those, but that, they just sat right up, that's one of the things that just drove the price up, is, is, is providing those things. We could, we could eliminate the, uh, the loop for parking, we could eliminate the, uh, the, um, the space in the cafeteria, we could put the, the stage, uh, you know, eight, you know, when you put the stage up 30 inches, it means you've got to have a ramp that's 30 feet long to get there, to be AD8.
I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, in the same way that I appreciate that we're learning from things that didn't come out the best, like for West Parish, fixing the gym configuration, fixing the stage situation, again, adjusting the parking, can we also, in the same way, go, and you know what we don't need is, you know, a 25-foot atrium with, you know, glass, or see, like, wood that we have to refinish, you know, every couple of years, right? Like, let's just X those out so we can do stuff like this stage, and, and then those kind of, you know, but to me, it's more important to get them a stage and have this really, I mean, West Parish is beautiful, I don't want to say, like, great job, it's a beautiful school, but I would, I would, I would not mind if my kid goes through a door that looks like the front inch to West, to veterans right now, if once he got into that school, that stage was waiting for him, and, you know, and the, you know, there's the spectator space, which I say, so, I, I would trade off if we were trading in for these things, it shouldn't just be plus, 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 but define, I'm not saying the value engineer type, we're putting lousy door handles or poor flooring, but I'm saying some of those aesthetic choices that we made last time around, you know, is a, a miracle, it results in a lot more plastic around the school, I can live with some plastic that's, you know.
Plastic or throwing.
Well, fine, we do.
Quick, yes.
You know, plastic's great.
We still have to do the budget tonight, folks.
This, this is our shot, you know, I, I'm not in the building committee.
We'll have more shots.
Yeah, but, but, but it's that point where, as you even said, if it goes too far, then it's too far, right?
But it's also helpful for us, if community members ask the costs, if we say there's going to be a stage and a regulation basketball, those are helpful for us to know, so that we can say this is not just going to function as an elementary school, it's going to function like what Fuller function does, what's, what's missing from our community, right? Like a, a place where people could gather and hang.
So I, I have two, two really small questions about the design, about the, about the stage and about the, the extra space. Again, I'm in favor of both of those, but I think it should be said, my understanding with West Parish, one of the reasons the gym's size is, is, is that if we've gone bigger for spectator space, those extra square feet are not reimbursable because we're outside the MSBA guidelines, is that the same case here? Have we gone outside the?
Correct, and that's what we showed in the slide.
Yes, so let's make sure we finish up here, I'm not, I'm not saying it's bad, I'm saying that is a worthy trade-off, right? Stages are not reimbursable, is that right?
No, stage, stages are not.
Oh, I was, I was mistaken, that's a good idea. Auditorium's not, but a stage is, a gym is, excellent, okay, that's a great way to work within the guidelines.
Yeah. But, but to the point that Jonathan makes, right, as we increase the height of that stage, right, continue to make that accessible, we have to increase, right, the length of the, we have to meet those code requirements. So while the stage is reimbursable up to a certain point, these are the guidelines that we're talking about, if, if we're exceeding that when that design starts to evolve as a result of that, some of that may not be reimbursable, at least that is classified as part of the stage, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Hmm?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Very welcome. Good questions.
See you soon. Thank you, Tom. You should have, could have jumped in anytime you wanted. But, uh, just give it a minute, let's see if, uh.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody? And don't thank you.
Okay, let's, uh, get a few, we'll be here at midnight.
All right, this is the, uh, the first presentation of the draft, well, second actually, yeah, quite quick, our draft budget overview, it was presented in part to the Building Finance Subcommittee, it was a two ago. And, um, the school committee will be.
You don't have a hyphen.
There's no hyphen in my name.
There's no hyphen.
There's no hyphen in my name.
Should I fix it now?
Absolutely. Yep, this is the school, you should get this spelled correct.
There's no H in here either.
There's not H either after the T.
Oh my God, this is school? No, no, two E, no. Sepatia, Sepatia.
All right, well, let's keep looking for first page.
Now you have the H, and you told me about the H in Sepatia.
Somebody's got to take it out.
So you're, you're resigning?
I'm so sorry about that.
Sepatia, there's no H in Sepatia, and there's a TH in Th.
I'm sorry, that was, I was not clear, that was my fault.
Tell yourself you have a sword for this.
That's it. That's it.
Sorry.
Okay, a bunch of counter.
That doesn't matter.
We began our work in November with the submissions of, um, of information from our principals, our department chairs, uh, we have discussed, we've met with principals individually, the Building and Finance Subcommittee has met with them throughout the course of the last couple of months, and here we are on February the 26th presenting the draft for the first time to the full, uh, school committee. Uh, the school committee will be voting on a draft budget to be presented at a public hearing by March 11th, and there of course may be a meeting or two before that, as we iron out exactly what it is that the school committee wants to put forward. The public hearing is scheduled now for April 1st, it's traditionally is the first week in April. Uh, the school budget, uh, after being manipulated and whether, uh, the school committee is appropriate, then will be submitted to the mayor by April of 9th, 2020. Uh, the mayor will be submitting their budget on or about May 1st. Uh, the city council then reviews and has a public hearing. Uh, we were asked tentatively whether we're available May the 28th in order to present our draft budget to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee of the City Council. And we can anticipate a final city council vote on or about June 11th, and then at the next school committee meeting, the school committee will then vote to approve its budget. Uh, the budget, of course, is the means by which our initiatives are maintained, and I'm not going to take a long time to do this, the district improvement plan is ready to go, but will be presented at our next school committee. But these are some of the rudiments of that particular committee. First and foremost, uh, it has to do with sustainable improvement of both the high school and the middle school. There are, there was a, a sustainable improvement plan developed by the high school, and it's in its implementation phase this year and for the next few years. And the middle school is following suit, developing a sustainable improvement plan as well for implementation next year. The types of positions pending funding, uh, to support those two plans, uh, these are the particular categories, we'll talk about the specifics in a couple of slides, uh, but they are looking for support in the areas of social, emotional learning, behavioral support, some special education coordination, uh, at the high school, expanded English language learner services, because our, the trend for English language learner students is to go up this way, and we've had 106 students enter the district since July 1st, 28 of them are students for whom who are English language learner students. So that's, that's quite a number, and I think we are projecting having close to over, about 220 to 224 ELO students, uh, in the district by next year. Uh, literacy coordination came through weight, with particular emphasis on that transition from the elementary schools into the middle schools. Uh, reading support, uh, which is, provides direct service to students, uh, there's a number of. Uh, there's a number of requests for academic support and intervention for students who are quite not picking up on the curriculum and understanding it at the same pace as their peers. And also coaching, particularly at the elementary and hopefully at the middle school level, uh, in terms of both literacy and math. Increasing student engagement. What works in the district and where the districts find their challenges can be directly related to the extent to which students are actively engaged and motivated in the work that we do. And these are just illustrations, again, it'll be amplified and when we discuss the district improvement plan. But the high school, um, has brought its plan as part of its self-evaluation through the New England Association of School Psychologists, has been centering a lot of its instructional focus in and around higher order thinking skills. The middle school is currently in the same process that the high school was in last year. And first and foremost, um, in terms of their plan and plan development, will be improvement strategies, instructional strategies, um, possibly focused on differentiated instruction, but that remains to be seen. At the elementary level, a lot of professional development is taking place with a consultant by the name of Melissa Orkin. Um, what we want to do is what Zaretta Hammond refers to as taking dependent learners and turning them into independent learners who know how to take information, take it apart, digest it, and then synthesize and evaluate it. Uh, in addition, there's some of the soft, uh, aspects to, to learning which have to do with a sense of belonging within the classroom and the community, uh, a sense of confidence they feel when they are successful and knowing that what they're learning is relevant to their needs as they move through their educational experience. Another major initiative has to do with chronic absenteeism. The numbers are startling, we can talk about that again in two weeks' time. Uh, but, um, in terms of categories, we need to identify, identify the underlying issues everywhere from houses that are totally dysfunctional till the willfulness of parents taking their kids to Disney World for a weekend. Early warning intervention and identification intervention systems has to do with taking data from academics, um, discipline, attendance, you name it, and putting it underneath one specific data format. So we can really look at the total student as well as the, uh, the subgroups as well. And we hope to extend out to the parent and community partnerships. Uh, we work hard at that, but more needs to be done, both at the personal level, working with parents and guardians, and systemically as well when we talk about, uh, community partnerships. This is a, this is a citywide, community-wide issue of chronic absenteeism. Unless we can get everybody on board and acknowledge and recognize the importance of being in that seat and going to be educated, then we're not going to be able to make progress. Kids, teachers can't teach kids who ate in the classroom. Some of the other district initiatives, just by listing, uh, tiered systems and supports. Our tier one is our general education. When we talk about instructional strategies and instructional focus, it's the general education we're talking about. When students can't quite keep up with the rest of the students for whatever reasons, then we need to have interventions. More targeted academic support for those children. And when all has been exhausted, then we have to consider the possibility that there might be a learning disability or self-disorder. Um, continued, this is ongoing, continued systematic MCAS prep, the way in which we look at the MCAS results, the test results, the, uh, analysis of the standards and how children have performed, as well as how we establish our goals, or more accurately, how the Department of Education sets the goals for us. Uh, as mentioned before, the continuous teaching of cognitively complex skills, another way of talking about higher order thinking skills. No need to articulate what they are, but, uh, as the standards suggest, uh, going K through 12, we want our kids to be college and career-ready based upon the standards that are presented to us by the Department of Education. Uh, we seek to maintain and to enhance a technology-rich environment. Comes in two parts, first has to do with the infrastructure and the second has to do with the ways in which we use technology in the classroom. Technology is the vehicle by which good instruction can be enhanced. It is not the end-all and be-all, and, uh, that is, uh, what we are striving for in a technology-rich environment. I mentioned before meeting the needs of BLL students so that we are compliant in terms of the amount of services that they have and that we can give them as strong a footing as possible. I mentioned the local early, local early warning intervention system dubbed LEWIS. Take a little small pride in that acronym. And, uh, again, that's a comprehensive review of data for individual students as well as for subgroups. There is some self-evaluation, which is the outcome of the coordinated program review, which we underwent a couple of years ago. And there are several means by which we're looking at different kinds of data to ensure that there's equity, equal opportunities, and that, um, as the new student opportunity plan is calling for, that, uh, we are raising the achievement of all of our subgroups. Communications and public relations is a very important component that we need to strengthen and enhance as well. And last, not last, but last on the list of course, is safety, ensuring that our safety measures in and around the schools, uh, is as efficient and effective as a candidate. Some of the guiding principles, our collaborative effort with the school committee, school and district leadership, and our site-based councils providing information to our principals regarding what they would, uh, hope to see uh, in the budget that is being proposed. Uh, our fiscal responsibility, we recognize that we are using taxpayer funds in which to support student achievements and their emotional health and wellbeing and do it, uh, maximally and at the same time maintain fiscal responsibility. And then targeted funding to provide additional supports to challenged students and their subgroups as well. Getting into the budget itself, um, this is a slide that is shown annually. These are the most significant factors that raise the cost of the budget on an annual basis. There's the cost of living, there are health insurance increases, step increases referred to teachers going from step five to step six. There are lane changes, teachers going from a MASTS degree to a MASTS plus 30 or a MASTS plus 60. Um, there are a number of new positions and we'll be talking about those very shortly. Uh, there is the increase in enrollment for our English language learners across the district. And, uh, special education, this is one thing that isn't surprising, it's the fact that at some point in time during the school year, unanticipated, uh, expenses for added district placements in particular becomes a reality and we have had that happen again within the last four to six weeks. Just some funding source information. Uh, the city contribution is 84.5% of the Gloucester School Department's budget. Chapter 70 is 15 and a half percent. That's $6.928 million includes a $229,000 boost which we can anticipate um, due to the Student Opportunity Act which was enacted a couple, three months ago. Percentage of expense categories, salaries and benefits make up 86% of the school budget, 86%. It's a labor-intensive job. Uh, ordinary, meaning the resources, the books, the texts, the materials, chalk, you name it. Um, that adds up to about 14% of our budget. In terms of, um, the projected FY21 funding increases, uh, we're going with the $1.2 million. That is what we have received, uh, from the, um, from the city last year. Um, it's more than we have received in the prior years and I think I can show that later on. Plus the $229,626. Uh, so in order to meet the increase in costs, which I just summarized, uh, we're looking at about 1.429626 as the figure that we feel we can make most of what we have taken in from our principals and our department heads and some of the feedback we've gotten from BNF and meet the costs for the FY21 proposed budget. Some significant cost adjustments, uh, to the budget. Um, again, the key word is significant, these are not all of them, these are the most significant. Uh, you see the GTA salary base and step increase is $900,000. Uh, we have a number of retirements this year, so that $231,000 comes in and goes towards the budget. The staff health insurance, we're estimating an increase of 9.5% and that's $494,257. My understanding is that the PEC, the public. Employee commission, uh, will, uh, be hearing from the GIC what the, um, anticipated increase in insurance is going to be next year. But our increase is not going to be the same as what GIC says because it's dependent upon the concentration of the number of staff members who subscribe to specific health plans and some health plans will jump more than others. If everybody was in the cheapest health plan, then our increases might go up 5%. But, uh, people have the choice to select good health plans and sometimes those health, health plans tend to increase more than some of the others. So we'll be, uh, and have, um, placed an increase in health insurance of 9.5%. We ran that past the city treasurer, he says that's a reasonable, it's a good figure to put in as you're in this stage of budget development. Also included, uh, we talked about, uh, some of the, uh, additional requests being made and the sustainable improvement, particularly at the high school and the middle school. Uh, this budget, um, as we're putting it forward, in, includes $565,000 worth of new positions. Added district tuition due to some aging out and some graduation of our students actually will help to contribute towards next year's budget, budget is a reduction in those costs of $297,000. So as shown before on the previous slide, uh, what we're projecting and anticipating is an increase in the budget of $1.4 million. At the last BNF meeting, there was a suggestion, we apparently are the only department across the city that absorbs its own health insurance costs. So the question was raised, well, what would the increase be if, um, well, before I get there, I'm sorry. Let me just, uh, back up for a moment and say that this year's budget is $43 million. The draft FY21 is at 44.5. There's that increase once again of 1.429819 and the percent increase is 3.31%. Um, in years past, over the last five years or so, the average increase that we have received from the city has been 2.52%. Uh, FY16 tops at 2.89, but FY20 was at 2.86. So in anticipation of receiving similar, uh, funds from the city plus the $229,000 from the Student Opportunity Act, that's how we came up with the number of $1.4 million. And that's what constitutes a 3.31% increase in this particular proposal. It was brought up, now I'm back to where I was, um, it was brought up that, um, the, the school department is the only department in the city that absorbs its own health insurance. And, uh, what would the increase be if, uh, the increases to the health insurance were not a part of our budget? So what, uh, what we've done here is we zeroed out the estimated increase for staff, staff health insurance under the hypothetical presumption that it's now over on the city side. So instead of the increase being $1.429 million without the health insurance hypothetically, it would be $935,562. And if we do the, uh, the arithmetic and the divisions and all the rest, subtract that from the budget that we're anticipating, coming up with another figure of 44, dividing the 935 by the 44 million, it would mean a 2.1% increase if the insurance was not part of the budget as opposed to a 3.31% increase.
You took the health insurance out of both face?
No. If we took the insurance, the 5 million of the insurance out of the base, it would bring it, the whole kid caboodle down to 39 million bucks. And if you divided the 935 by the 5 million, it would come out instead of 2.1, it would be about 2.4. So it's.
I have no problem, I can give you the West Parish set that we're paying on the city side for that school, not a problem. I'll take all the insurance, we deck over the deck. So that's what we do, we help each other.
We help each other.
To illustrate.
Expenditures by school per, uh, per pupil, uh, this gives you a list of, um, what we are spending per pupil. This is primarily, almost exclusively predicated on salaries because as you know, um, at the, at the elementary levels, we have equilibrated, uh, how much per pupil spending for ordinary expenses. Veterans of course has its co-teaching. And the, uh, the cost per pupil is also going to be predicated on the number of kids in the school, obviously. So you can have classes at these Gloucesters where there are 18 kids and classes at another school where it's, uh, where the 22 children on average and that's going to affect the per pupil cost. But what we also note is that the middle school is a little bit low, it's on the low end. And, uh, over time, uh, there are some requests that the middle school is making based upon its anticipated plan for next year. Uh, and that will probably, if we're able to get those additions, that will of course raise the per pupil costs and then come the next budget for FY22, you'll need to see what their needs are and what can be managed. Um, in our, uh, in, in our proposed budget, we have taken the requests from the different schools and we have broken them up into option A, B, and C. The budget that we are presenting as a proposal includes, uh, options A and B. When we mentioned before that we have built into this budget $565,000 for new positions, includes what you're about to see in options A and B. Okay? So starting off with the high school, uh, the GHS adjustment counselor and, um, the, the bridge program, which is a dropout prevention program, that adjustment council position was cut in order to meet the budget last year. Uh, the recommendation is to reinstate that, uh, also in a school of, uh, just around 800 students and with the social, emotional needs of our kids, having a second adjustment counselor to help, uh, school-wide is something which is considered significant. The Gloucester High School Coordinator of Special Education is another position that's being requested. Uh, what we are looking at here is establishing a, um, an administrative position, which means that the special education, uh, teaching numbers would go down by one and one of those positions would be elevated into an administrative position. The net cost for that would be $12,000. There's still, the, this, this current position right now is a program leader position. It's a little different from the program leader positions in English, Math, Science, and Social Studies because that program leader helps to organize what the department does, but does not work in the classroom, does not provide direct services. The, um, the proposal is to create the administrative position and to still maintain the program leader position that any, uh, special education teacher at the high school could apply for. They would maintain the more, um, daily kinds of responsibilities throughout the work year. The coordinator position would add 27 days to the summer and there's a lot of work that needs to be done during the summer. Uh, there's also, uh, the possi, not possibility, but that person would also be involved in evaluation, scheduling, and, uh, and helping to ensure that there are many aspects to the turnaround plan that the high school is doing and to ensure that the special education department is moving in that same direction. That coordinator's position, uh, would hold those responsibilities. Sound about right?
I'd like to add, just in, in terms of the, um, we're thinking about the needs of the school, we talk about the populations that are increasing with the school. We do have an unusually high number of special education students in our school district. Um, and so the, um, you know, this is helping to, to address, um, you know, uh, that in relation to, uh, as Dr. Sapphire said, the, our plan for, uh, school improvement so that there's sufficient oversight. The other part of the context I would add for this is we did a couple of years ago lose an, uh, assistant principal position at the high school as, as part of a reduction. So we've, um, we're looking at ways of being creative at filling those roles so that those things that that position did can still happen, but we can do it in a, in a cost-effective way. So this is a cost-effective way to address some of those concerns as well. As similar to, uh, previously we'd, um, elevated a, um, a guidance counselor into a similar coordinator position to address some of the needs, uh, lost by the assistant principal. This is another move in that direction in addition to the things Dr. Sapphire said.
And here, I, in the aforementioned sped program leader, that position remains, it's a stifling position, but the nature of the work that they do, meaning that this person, like an English, Math, or Science program leader, they would be teaching four classes and then the fifth block would be reserved for, uh, work as program leader. That is retained as well as its position becomes an administrative position. I've spoken with, uh, our attorneys and we will be required to do some, as I anticipated, but we will be required to do some impact bargaining with the GTA on this in order to make sure that all parties are comfortable with the change. Uh, it's also arguable that administration and teachers share similar kinds of responsibilities, but that'll be part of the conversation as we go forward. We currently have a, a person in a position that is in the classroom, working at the high school with our ELL students. And that portion of that person's salary is grant-funded, grant-supported. And, uh, that person's also doing some coordination of the administrative tasks. And that person's also doing some coordination of the administrative tasks involved in and around the ELL program. The request here is to expand that person's hours. I think that it would then result in full-time in thirty-five hours. Again, with a split in terms of where the salary comes from for this individual. But the high school has expressed the need and you'll see the chart as I've already suggested. The numbers are expanding and my superintendent's report will also indicate the need for more coordination with respect to English language learners as well. We're still on option A. All of these are in the proposal that we're bringing forward. As, as are these. Moving to the middle school, last year, we were able to implement an in-school suspension, the PACE program over at the high school. And O'Malley is asking to do the same. Sending a fourteen-year-old out at home for the day on a suspension is not constructive. If we can manage the in-school suspension program and provide wraparound services with our social service personnel as well, we feel that this would be constructive, educational, and a much, a much better basis for trying to help kids, you know, deal with the challenges that cause them to misbehave in class. Again, with the increase in English language learners, Lynn, Principal of O'Malley is suggesting that a education support professional, a paraprofessional, would do the trick in terms of meeting the needs of the students. The elementary principals are asking for two math coaches. And we have placed one of those positions in the option A. The third, the second one is in option C. So if we were to bring this math coach on board, that means that if you divide it all up, that each of the five elementary schools would have a point six coach in math. Right now, Beeman and Veterans have a point five and it's point three. So they could use some beefing up with respect to their math coaching. And the O'Malley reading specialist, this is a position that does provide direct service to children. And what our Director of Special Education is saying is that there are a number of contracted services that we're paying for. And if we can find our own person, it's more economical. We, that person's a part of the community, part of the district. And it would be, in terms of costs, it would be neutral because we would not be spending money on contracted services. So the total for option A is two hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars and we still have to get to five sixty-five. So this means that we can also include option B. And bear in mind, subsequent conversations from the school committee may say, well, we want to move this one from C to B or to A or what have you. That's, that's to be discussed going down the road. At the high school is a request for an English teacher and that is for academic support.
That's right. Yes, so again, as part of our sustainable improvement plan, the area that both O'Malley and the high school have identified is, is the need for what are called tier-two interventions. So, you know, students who are behind in, in their progress, who might need alternative and additional support to meet the standards at their grade level, particularly ninth graders, making that eighth, ninth grade transition and also tenth graders. We would be able to have additional English support classes with this position. We're piloting academic skills and practice classes this year, which helps students with more global deficits in, in that transition, particularly from eighth to ninth grade and, and other students who need help becoming better students. It's called academic skills and practice. Second semester, we're piloting a math skills and practice class that we'll be able to have a few more sections of next year. But because of the reduction, again, a couple of years ago, in an English position, we're not able to do that in English at this point. So this would allow us to have those interventions as well.
And in a, in a similar vein, O'Malley is asking for a position as an interventionist in math and intervention in literacy. There are a lot of students who may have difficulty accessing the curriculum at the same pace and with the same level of understanding as there are, as others. So we need to have things in place to work with those kids to get them up to speed. Beeman is in, had originally asked for a point five ELL teacher. Advertising for a half-time ELL teacher is pointless. We would need to bring in FT, a full-time FTV on board. And either that teacher would be at Beeman full-time or if we needed that person around the district, they then could be itinerant and work in other schools as well. An ELA coordinator, I mentioned this before, this would be in essence a K through eight position. There is some offset based upon some of the monies in professional development, I believe. And the, the net cost to the new budget would be fifty-two thousand. Greg, perhaps you can speak a little bit to this position?
Yeah, some of the offsets are from shifting costs into grants, anticipated grants. That ELA coordination, we have not had, for the last two years, we have not had an ELA coordinator. We used to have a K through eight coordinator. That position was vacated two years ago. We tried to search for a replacement and were unable to find a replacement. And so we've been making do with a number of staff members taking on each of those positions with, or each of those duties. With the extensive needs at the middle school associated with the turnaround plan, we feel that it's, it's very important to have that coordination back in place with a particular focus on transition points from fifth to sixth grade.
Thank you. And I mentioned the two intervention positions at O'Malley. And you can see on the bottom that the total of the two options, A plus B incorporated into this budget proposal is five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Option C, these are not in the budget at this point in time. There was a request, was it Beeman for the elementary adjustment counselor?
Yes.
An O'Malley specialist for the electives, she has since backed off in terms of just how important that is. Plum Cove was asked for special education teacher. There is the second request for the elementary math coach. The IT department was asking for a computer support analyst. There are some baseline operations that they felt if this person's doing that, then some of the other staff members would be able to reach out to things with respect to the infrastructure. And there are requests for some point five paraprofessionals at the preschool, but they have not been included at this point. All three options, A, B, and C, come to nine hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And again, we have incorporated it to this proposal, five hundred sixty-five. This is just a, a list of all that is mentioned here. And these tiles, if need be, can be shifted around as the school committee considers what they feel is in the best interest of the district with respect to these additional requests. Potential city funding, we've talked about this. And we have a chart here that if the city would offer two point two, two-five percent, all the way up to three point five percent. As I mentioned, the, the average over five years was two point five-two. Last year was two point eight-six. Taking into account the two twenty-nine thousand, we figure, or we're speculating that a reasonable place to go and a realistic place to go would be to ask for the three point three-one percent at the one point four-two-nine. If we are successful in getting that funding from the city, if we only went with option A, we would still have two hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars to, to use. With those figures, options A and B, that helps us to balance the budget with the aforementioned additional requests that we have mentioned. With that figure, if we were to ask for A, B, and C, the all nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars or so, we would still have to come up with three hundred eighty-four thousand dollars.
Of reductions.
Of reductions. Add district tuitions. Here we see a, a five-year, including a projection for FY twenty-one. And if you look at FY twenty, it's at four, it was at four point four. And you can see that FY twenty-one, we're anticipating it being at four point one because of, again, the gradual aging out. However, over the last four to six weeks, we are looking at eight placements. This happened just like that. And with that said, we can anticipate, one of them, I think, is a forty-five day. So not all of them are going to be at sixty-five. A forty-five day is twelve thousand. But if they deem that after the forty-five day placement that the child should be at a district, then you're going to absorb at least sixty-five thousand dollars worth of costs as well. The, these anticipated increases to the budget this year and built into the base next year, Garrett has already managed to place those into the budget that's being presented to you tonight. And the way that we've done that is that we were hoping to cut prepay in half, down to five hundred fifty thousand dollars, special education prepay. But you raised the amount that we would place into prepay up to eight hundred fifty thousand dollars. This enables us to absorb these costs and to bring the additional requests that we've already indicated we'd like to get into the budget.
Is that in C or is it A and B?
A and B. Just A and B.
A and B. English language learner enrollment, as I mentioned before, twenty-eight out of one hundred and eighty-six new enrollees since July first are LED students. So it's happening quickly and our projections are for about two hundred twenty-four students across the district. Do you know offhand how many at the high school?
Right now? Change is often, but I think it's fifty-four.
And as you can see, in FY seventeen, it was at one forty-seven. In FY fifteen, it was probably eighty to ninety. So it's been extraordinary what has happened over the last few years in terms of the different times families coming in. We talked about health insurance costs. Here we have a, a five-year listing, of course, with FY twenty-one being a projection. FY nineteen was, was a banner year and that health insurance was sort of stabilized and in fact went down. But last year, the, the increase was eight point six-two percent and we're budgeting for the nine point five percent for this year. Some of our grants, this is not FY twenty-one, this is FY nineteen and twenty, so we're looking for patterns. Title one went down between FY nineteen and FY twenty. Title one is the support that we get for quote, low-income students and we're able to hire teachers as tutors to work with our students who qualify with a low income. However, the title one federal calculation has referred, referred it back to the old system, I believe. So that calculation means that we're receiving more title money. And I believe our low-income population has increased as well by a percentage point or two. So I think we can expect at least what we received in FY nineteen and possibly more. Title two, a brief description of title two, sir?
Very quickly, title two is one of our main sources that funds professional development for teachers and paraprofessionals. And that's our, that's our mainstay and we use it for conferences, consultants, and in district courses. And that dropped substantially from nineteen to twenty and hopefully won't drop further.
So there's some care and concern there and we're keeping a watchful eye to see what happens. With that, IDEA two forty, which is our major special education grant funding, seems to be remaining robust and we're not too worried about that. Circuit breaker funds, we anticipate spending eight hundred ninety-six thousand dollars in, towards circuit breaker funding and maintaining a cushion of two hundred fifty thousand dollars, two hundred fifty thousand, yes, which as a, plus the specialty, the school committee's contingency should come to pass as well. Capital improvements, the, the preschool, I believe our lease ends August two thousand twenty-one with options to lease for at least a year or two more. And there are stipulations in that lease, if I'm not mistaken, towards a purchase at a fixed price that was set at the time that the lease was signed and was at around three point seven million dollars. We have been notified by IT that our wireless system over the next couple, three years needs to be modernized. The access points in the classrooms, in particular, the entire IT wireless system, they anticipate that the cost would be around three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. However, there is a federal grant that they are, that Grant is looking into to the tune of around two hundred sixty thousand dollars, which maybe, we may be eligible for. We don't know the answer to that yet, but those monies could then be applied towards the total of three hundred twenty-nine thousand.
And Comcast funds as well.
And Comcast funds, which are in the hands of the city.
Yeah.
And I know that both departments, that James and Grant are both working on this together. And we have listed here the, the new building. We heard a lot about that tonight with the estimate of cost, cost being sixty-nine point one. Our reimbursement rate for West Parish was around fifty-eight percent for that portion of the project which is reimbursable. That doesn't mean the whole project and I think everybody knows that. On average, what we're really talking about is around a thirty-eight percent reimbursement for an entire project. So if this thing's sixty-nine, and please, these numbers are subject to change, these are speculative. But if we're looking at approximately a sixty-nine, seventy million dollar project and a thirty-eight percent reduction, we're looking at the cost to the city of around forty to forty-five million dollars. West Parish was a thirty-eight million dollar project, thirty-nine with the renovations at St. Anne's, and it cost the city twenty-four million dollars. So, you know, listening to MSBA, following their guidelines, not only provides a very solid basis for development and construction, but it also pays in terms of the level of reimbursement that you do receive. District-wide security, hopefully next year, we've got the Field House coming online this summer. There are some, some security issues at both the entrance to the middle school and the entrance to the high school. Those monies hopefully will be available through, I presume, a loan authorization when the time comes. And hopefully by a year from this coming summer, the, those two areas will be safer and secure than they've ever been before, so to speak. Repaving, front of the building at Beeman, it, it needs it desperately. Repaving is very expensive. We don't have an estimate on that yet. DPW is well aware of it and the extent to which they can, I think we've got their assurances that they will do so. Playground improvements at Plum Cove, the fence, and I think we've heard about the slide before. And, you know, I understand the frustration that we all experience when DPW says that's, that's not our, that's not our stuff. So we need to find ways to ensure the safety and to replace what we can, when we can. Curtains and shades will be taken care of. I know that the high school put seven thousand five hundred dollars towards curtains and shades this fiscal year and you've also budgeted the same amount for next year across the district.
Beeman and O'Malley as well.
Okay, but, so we'll get that done. And we also heard about the gym floor at West Parish and some resurfing, resurfacing and tile replacement at Plum Cove. Again, the gym floor and the wooden edifice in front of West Parish, both, as we were told yesterday, is our schedule for this summer. And the resurfacing, the tile replacement of Plum Cove this summer as well?
Summer this.
Yeah, so we're, we're optimistic. As it's traditional to mention that not all salaries come out of the operational budget. Revolving funds and grants both together add up to around two point two million dollars or so in terms of salaries. So here's a brief listing of the salaries that are funded by the revolving funds, not in the operating budget. And here's, here are the listing of the salaries found in our grants, also not in the operating budget. And this, I believe, is Mr. Wallace's donation?
So why is it only thirty-one?
Is it fifty thousand for FY twenty-one?
Just a couple of comparisons. These are the dark districts. This comes from the Department of Ed website. It has to do with similar kinds of communities and districts based upon demographics, performance, et cetera. This are the per pupil expenditures for FY eighteen, which is the latest information that the Department of Ed provides us. And I believe we are sixth out of eleventh in terms of- terms of overall per pupil costs and spending. And student-to-teacher ratios, also based upon the DART districts. You can see where Gloucester is located, we are at eleven point five to one. This refers to teachers, but it also includes your adjustment counselors, your psychologists, your nurses, and guidance people, and all social service personnel. So overall, we're at eleven point five to one, and I think that is it.
Yes.
Is this the, is this the slide, is it the, is this the slide, is it the, is it the beanup on the council side and to the city council?
Do I understand your question?
Sorry, I'm sorry, if nothing happened spelled incorrectly, some of them were spelled incorrectly, and so I wanted to see those get touched out before.
Oh.
Well, the guy from Midwest trying to do Massachusetts now, they have been playing my, my.
It's a strange bit.
What is DART? District leader?
Sorry.
DART, what is DART?
DART, again, is a, the Department of Ed establishes the basis for making comparisons for similar kinds of community school districts, based upon demographics, based upon performance and the like. So they arbitrarily, based upon those numbers, select similar types of schools, and you can use them as the basis for making your comparisons. And in fact, in our negotiations with the GTA, we used, we used these same DART districts and salary comparisons in order to come up with a proposal which was ultimately accepted by the GTA. And that's, so that's the, the first flush, if you will, of the FY twenty-one draft proposal. We can certainly try to ask some questions.
Any questions? We'll, ENF will be taking this up next week, and we'll be bringing it back for discussion and a vote for public hearing. It'll be the first of three votes that we'll take on the budget. We'll be voting for two for publication for public hearing at our next meeting.
What's that?
Okay.
Well, this, well, we have more information on the eight new out of district.
Sure.
We'll have that cost before on the eleven.
Eight new, I'm sorry.
The out of districts that came in.
Yeah, we can provide enough, definitely.
Because those are the costs that we'll discuss.
All of them are sixty-five thousand dollars.
They're included. They're included in the budget as placeholders, but we may not have any definitive answer on the eight placement yet, whether they're really going to happen or not.
But they're in there.
They're in there.
Okay, I was, I misunderstood, I thought, okay.
Yes. You want to sit down for the superintendent's?
I don't think so.
You deserve it.
I don't want to, actually.
So we will move on in our role of being home tonight to the superintendent's report.
All right, this is a one item ticket, and it has to do with our dropout rate for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. The stuff just was unadbarred, and first, just briefly, how the Department of Ed calculates the high school dropouts. Of course, it takes the total of all of them. It calculates the number of students who have determined to have dropped out of school over the summer, then the number of school year dropouts minus those found in other districts. And sometimes students will say, I'm leaving, and I'm going to another district, it never happens, and the dropout then becomes Gloucester's responsibility. If a student and their family move to another state, that counts as a dropout because the Department of Ed cannot account for where they have gone. They also then throw into their calculations students who reported as returning to school, who graduated, who earned a GED. All of this then adds up to the final dropout count. You get your number, you put it over the total number of kids, you multiply it by a hundred, you get your percentage. The dropout rate for two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen is high, it's at three point one percent, but there is some explanation that needs to accompany that figure. That means that twenty-five students in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen dropped out of school. Of the twenty-five, eleven of them are limited English proficient slash Hispanic or Latina. The twenty-six or twenty-eight that I mentioned coming in this year, who are limited English proficient, half are Portuguese, half are Spanish. It's hard, when you're looking at the overall charts, it's hard to separate the groups out because an LEP student can be a high need student, can be an economically disadvantaged student, and all the rest. But when, and you've had a chance, I presume, because this was in the packet, you've had a chance to take a look at this, significantly, the two groups, and we're talking about the same children that are, have dropped out at very high percentages, are the LEP English language learners and are Hispanic or Latino. The, if we look at the limited English language learners, students, you can see that it says twenty-one point two percent dropout for all grades. That means that twenty-one point two percent, or eleven of, out of fifty-two, those are the ones that, that have dropped out, okay? And the same is true, the percent for all grades for the Hispanic or Latino is at eleven. So those numbers are quite high. If we look at cross at economically disadvantaged, high needs, all of these we'd like to break down, but in my estimation, those are the two numbers that are really particularly striking, especially when we take a look at it historically. If we look at the percentage over time, and the top row and the top chart, we can see that starting in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, the dropout rate for all students was two point one, one point six, one point four, and then it went to three point one. If we look at the LEPs, we see that it was eight point three, eight point eight, two point one, and then twenty-one point two. So there was a spike from last year, two thousand and seventeen, eighteen, to two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, in the number of limited English proficient students who have dropped out, and there are some reasons for that. If we look at the Hispanics, from three point eight, four point nine, then it was a drop to one point one, and then a spike again, you know, consistence, since we're probably talking about the same students, where they went up to eleven percent of the Hispanic population dropping out. If we look at the total numbers of students, we can see that all students went from eight sixty-two to where we are at eight oh four. But both the LEPs and the Hispanics and Latinos have virtually doubled in size in the, in the course of those particular years. So more numbers, and unfortunately, the numbers suggest a, a larger potential for a percentage of those kids to, to drop out. If we look at the age differentials, a lot of these students we have not had for four years, and some of them we only had for months. And some of them, for example, in the first row, we had twelfth graders who we did have for more than two years, but they were twenty and twenty-one years of age. High school can get to be a pretty tough thing for, for people who may need to go out and go to work for their families, don't know, but it's a lot of pressure. We've had eighteen-year-olds in grade nine, seventeen-year-olds in grade nine, in grade ten, we had a nineteen-year-old and an eighteen-year-old. So on average, for our LEPs, our Hispanics, on average, at the age of dropping out, they were eighteen. And you can see that here, both for the LEPs and for our Hispanics, the average was eighteen years of age. I don't, I'm not comfortable saying what I'm about to say, but if for any reason those dropouts, those eleven weren't here, then the rest of the high school would be at one point four percent. But they are here, and we have to find ways to continue to engage these students and help them to get, you know, through their high school education.
Can I just ask, what kind of follow-up was done to determine where the students that are considered dropouts went?
Yeah, well, this-
Were they temporarily here?
This is our, well, I-
By state?
Yeah, I can, I can do, I can do that a couple of ways. One student entered GHS on November twenty-sixth and left on February eleven. A second student entered GHS on September twenty-fourth and left on December fifth. These are dropouts that are coming, you know, on our numbers. A third student dropped out on August thirty-first, and a fourth student registered for the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen years and dropped out on November the twentieth. This chart shows, this is from our district data manager, and this is information that is reported out to the Department of Ed. So we can see the, at age of the time of dropout for the first child was at eighteen, dropout confirmed. Here's the dropout status and location unknown, which means that we, through the Department of Ed, reach out to all districts. Again, the, the, the family could say, well, we're moving to Havre, or we're moving to North Adams, or whatever the deal is, but if they don't register, it's our dropout.
But if they're eighteen, they don't have to go to school.
True.
So why is it considered a dropout?
I suggest you ask the Department of Education that.
They haven't graduated.
They haven't graduated.
But, so if you don't graduate, you consider a dropout regardless of your age?
Even twenty years old.
Yeah. Even though you only require to go to school until you're eighteen?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, sixteen, actually.
I thought she should eighteen.
No, I don't think so, there's time.
So we go also?
Yeah. Here we have a dropout confirmed, here we have one left due to employment, another student enrolled in an agile education, but it's a non-credit adult education program. Status and location unknown, transferred in state, but apparently the Department of Ed has not picked up on that student, so it's on our hard eye. Dropout, status and location unknown, confirmed plans unknown, again, and one child apparently moved to Martha's Vineyard, but it's a dropout, which means that they didn't enroll, so. So the numbers are high, our population's increasingly more fluid, there are families moving in and perhaps moving out, and it seems to be having an impact on our dropout data. But we also want to do something about it, which is why we want to add the adjustment counselor for the bridge program, why we have the in-house suspension plus the wraparound services. You know, we need to find ways to increasingly counsel these kids. We can't control if family circumstances and situations are such that it's beyond our control, that's one thing, but-
Okay, stop running.
But the extent to which, but the extent to which we can meet the needs of those children, we need to continue to try.
I have a question.
No.
Who does this outreach to try to figure this out, about where they go?
Well, that's the administration of the high school.
So-
I can say, so more specifically, guidance, yeah, sorry. I was, I can just need some help with the homework, but I'll get there in a little while. So the guidance counselors do a lot of the outreach, and then the ELLA coordinator position that I talked about before, the current person in that position speaks two languages and is able to do a lot of the outreach to, to the families that speak Portuguese, Italian, and Spanish. So, and then the deans of students, we also have a, we also have someone who works with the odd attendants, and that role has really expanded in, in doing, whereas it was at one point more limited to going to court with students and families related to attendance, now more integrated with the ELLA coordinators, the administration, and the guidance counselors in doing the outreach when we're trying to find kids that aren't coming to school. So that's how we coordinate through those areas.
And the ELLA coordinator?
Yep.
Do they do preventative work with the families?
Lots of outreach. Ms. Rex can speak to that too, yeah, who teaches SEI classes, yes. Prior to, as we're working with kids, we find a handful of absences are taking place with somebody, we will do the outreach to make connections to the family, but again, that's why we want to expand to that position, so we're able to do that more.
And when you said the adjustment counselors for the bridge program, it's going to be fully for the bridge program?
No.
Oh, okay, just, okay. Then why do we ask those questions in the ENF that I-
No, it's very legitimate question. Every teacher who, who we know has a student who is a limited English proficient student is required to take a course in what's called sheltered English perversion, which has to do with how do you reach out, how do you connect with kids? Again, Rachel, I don't know if you have that, Amy as well, has had extensive experience, and they need to take that, bring it to the classroom, and find ways of bringing those kids in and all the much, no, small task, given all the constraints, it goes on in people's lives.
Any questions? Thank you very much. We have a motion to accept the superintendent's report.
So, Becky?
On the favor say aye.
Aye.
We will move on to our action area.
Mr. Chair, you're not going to address the school committee annual council?
I'm going to table that, they have been busy this week.
Okay. Not following you anyway.
Right. Don't want to get involved in this one. Subcommittee reports?
I did my report last week of the things that were highlights of that meeting, and we just went over budget, we're leaving again March fourth to go over the budget, we'll ask some questions and make recommendations to the committee.
Okay, we, later in the meeting, we will go into executive session to discuss who the teacher, ratified the Boston Teachers Association memorandum of agreement, but first of all, Kate, we have an approval of grant, the DESD, significant disproportionality in special education targeted program improvement grant in the amount of eight thousand dollars.
I will tell you, accept the grant.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
It's only, you can explain?
Well, sure, it's in the packet, doesn't necessarily much. So, it's a special ed, and Patty's not here, do you know anything about this credit?
Right, I don't.
Purpose of this target grant is to support the work of local education agencies identifying the significantly disproportionality in special education for the two thousand and nineteen, twenty school year, and the LEAs that are at risk of identification for significant disproportionality in special education for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year.
I'm not seeing it, I don't buy it.
I'll have that, I'll send that an email tomorrow.
Do you want to accept it?
I'm willing to accept it.
You want to accept it?
Nothing to be done with it.
Okay. Any other questions and discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Ode, it's unanimous. We'll move on to, we've already had a substantial MSBA update. I will just say that there is a building committee meeting tomorrow at five o'clock at East Gloucester School, and will be, there will be presentations from the HVAC designer as well as the LEEDs consultant.
What consultant?
The, it's the environmental-
Energy.
Energy.
Veteran? No.
No, except East Gloucester. The East Gloucester, and it's at five o'clock. Okay, is there anything else we need to talk about before we go into executive session?
I will, we will move to executive session for the purpose of approving the contract with the Boston Teachers Association, and will be turned into open session to discuss and approve or not. Select it.
Okay. All right, roll call vote.
Kathy Planson?
Yes.
Mr. Cabanza?
Yes.
Chairman Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mayor Taken?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
And Ms. Weeser?
Yes.
Okay, we will take a five-minute recess, and we'll begin the executive session.